I'd like you all to be in order. And would everyone please rise to the pledge of allegiance and the bank standing for the moral title?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. Next item is the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order. Lots of procedural problems again at today's agenda, but one is the minutes. Number two, some of the minutes. It looks like September minutes.
The Board of Supervisors approved the September minutes, and for some reason they're not listed on board docs, and I don't know why, so you have to approve them the way that they are written. So I thought that I would put them on there and make you aware of it, and you can choose to leave them, but they weren't on the board docs, and I'm not sure why. So you approved them, that's the way they were approved, is whether you wish to put them out there in case anybody has any changes or comments, or you can leave it the way it is. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
That's not the proper way to put it, because I don't understand why the county attorney has looked over all these minutes either. I don't understand that. We can't write that down before.
Mr. Luke looked over them because we had a FOIA request from Mr. Conick, and we've been involved in a lawsuit, so he wanted to review them to make sure that he thought that things went right.
Like I said, he did a very good job on February, and that's about what he did.
He was looking from a litigation standpoint.
I understand, and that's why he's already in February. Well, February minutes, we could say two, three lines of ink if we just said they can do that, and that went home. That's about as indepth as they are. So, you know. Again, I'll try and get through though. I don't know why we're working on February, March minutes. We still have October, November, and January minutes, and we ought to be adopting, will we adopt February, March, and we adopting September?
I'm sorry, it was October and what?
We have an October, November, and January that's outstanding.
I think October's been very long.
We have the one set in the fire department that has not been reviewed by this board or adopted, and November hasn't been reviewed.
From the fire company?
We haven't been there.
Community outreach meeting, it's up, it's here in my board docs. Probably the 7:30 one there, third one in the file.
Are you objecting to the agenda? I'm objecting to the way that the, all these minutes are. I mean, we certainly can't adopt all these in this one minute loop, because we haven't had time to correspond with our notes or the videos you're supposed to have to review. So are you suggesting, because we're rehearsing the agenda first, are you suggesting we change the agenda?
We're looking at the minutes.
We're looking at the minutes.
And as my note indicated to you, I realize that it's a lot of data, so I was anticipating not approving them today, but getting your feedback from you, putting them in the edits in the minutes, and then we can have them back for an approval.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm taking a look at these minutes, and there are some typos and some things that I wanted to send to the county administrator to hopefully clean them up a little bit. So I was under the impression, because it was listed as review and edit, that we weren't going to be approving these, and that we wouldn't have an opportunity to go back and provide comment to them. My understanding of the other minutes, and I appreciate the clarifications, that if they hadn't been approved, we would approve those, and it was looking at much more final format than these, than these others.
If September minutes have already been approved, they do now probably look at this board now.
How would you like to clarify them or approve them, or what, whatever you want to do? They've been approved, they've just haven't been on board docs, so we can place them on board docs and be done, or do you want to review them again?
If this is the manner in which they were approved, then that's where they need to be, is posted on board docs and in the town book over here at the clerk's office.
That's the way they were approved.
So this number of minutes, along with the recommendations, I believe we should postpone it for one month to make sure that we have everything in there that we need.
I was under the impression that was a big tab.
Correct.
So do you want to re-approve them?
To re-approve them, I'm fine to open them on board docs.
I'm saying that I'm probably in front of the board to re-approve.
All right, well, the agenda.
I think, Mr. Chairman, the first agenda there has to do with the building task forces, Frasier and I represent the board upon, and I think the initial agenda that came out did not have a, did not have a report from this task force, and so, that's what Mr. Frasier's consent. I ask that this be the agenda that you amended, so that you could provide the board and public an update on the building task. Just approve the agenda.
This morning, I realized that we needed a resolution from the Road Rustic Red Project Route 636, Schoolhouse Road. This was approved as part of the VDOT six-year plan. They are asking for a resolution to stink that approval. Is that something that you can address today, or do you want that on for the next month? It was part of the six-year plan that has been approved. So VDOT's asking for a confirmation.
I'm okay with it now.
Okay.
General fine stuff.
Will we have a motion to approve the agenda? We have a second.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll say that. All the ladies and gentlemen, all those ladies and gentlemen, say aye. All opposed, aye. Let our school. Doctor, if you're here, who's the doctor?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We finished out the 2016-17 school year with our traditional graduation ceremony on May 26th to celebrate the accomplishment of 69 graduates. Over $127,000 in scholarship funds were distributed this year, so we were very pleased with the overall performance of the students, as well as the generosity of the community. Summer school started today for high school students and will continue through the month of June from 9 to 12. The elementary school will be offering two sessions of summer school, one for jump start in grades K through 3 during the week of June 12, and another session for grades 4 through 7 the week of June 19. And we will be using buses to provide transport for the June 12 through 22nd sessions. There is also going to be a therapeutic day treatment camp taking place at the elementary school for approximately eight weeks, beginning June 12 from 9 to 12, and this is being led by the National Council, which provides an opportunity for students to continue to build social skills through the summer. Our CPS continues to make progress with safety upgrades. We, at our last school meeting, had a report that we have already installed large monitors for the school resource officers to be able to look at video recordings. We are working on gate coming from Flatwood, interior gates for the schools, alarming cameras for the exterior doors. We have already updated our visitor login with an electronic sign-in and put sliding glass at the windows to make the access to the school more safe. So those are in progress, and we have also scheduled Alice training for August, which will provide our staff with active shooter response training. And then we have Sandy Hook Promise Training that is being scheduled for parents and students. Finally, our superintendent search process continues. The board has reviewed applications and is in the planning phase for interviews, and with luck, you may have a new superintendent to meet at your next meeting. I did bring a program for the supervisors who want anyone to make the correction.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a follow-up question?
Sure.
Do you have a sense of budget impact to the schools for all of these new security?
Right now, everything we've been able to do within the constraints of the budget funds that we have right now, there is safety grant money, and we just received a notice from the Department of Education today about the safety grant, and we are looking to be able to utilize those funds for as much of this as possible. So right now, we haven't hit any major funding issues with the current safety upgrades that we've discussed.
And I can appreciate you don't have the answer to this question on the tip of your tongue, but do you have any sense of what the total cost is for these new safety measures?
I'm going to read a copy of this with your clerk. There were some anticipated prices for these, so it looks like it would be roughly $15,000 maybe for the construction and materials part, and then one of the recommendations was for a school social worker, and that would be a personnel item. So that position has been advertised, but we haven't actually moved into hiring that person yet, so that would put it up to closer to $80,000.
So do all the physical improvements, you think those will be in place by the beginning of the next school year?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we have, one of our central office staff has been working pretty much every day on getting these, getting bids, getting upgrade information, so we've been working on all of this since school has closed.
You want to work, Michelle?
Hi.
This is a presentation from one of the sewer authorities.
Stand up here. This is all immediate meaning. I'm Alex Sharp, I'm the chairman of the Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority. The sewer authority was set up by the board of supervisors in 1968, and it was in answer to a problem of pollution in Sperryville, and septic systems were emptying directly into the river. So the plant and the collection system were completed sometime, I believe, in 1985, and so it's about 30, a couple of years old. So the original intent was just for sewer in the town of Sperryville or the area of Sperryville. Right now, we charge $40 per month, per, we call it EDU, and that is equivalent dwelling unit. We don't provide water, so we don't really have a way of measuring, like the town of Washington, for example, has a water meter, so that calculates more or less the discharge. Since then, we've gotten into operating the systems, the wastewater systems of both schools and also the drinking water for both of them. For a number of years, we were taking care of the town of Washington water supply, both the testing and operation. ESS took that over in January of 2015, so that's all being handled by one party. Rappahannock County, we are separate from Rappahannock County completely, but Rappahannock County does provide service of doing our payroll, which is actually very helpful, because we're able to get under the state retirement and also health insurance group, so that's something that would be more difficult for us to do by ourselves. And so we are independent of the board of supervisors and the county, except that the board of directors has five members that are appointed by the board of supervisors. So there are actually five members. I'm the chairman, Andrew Haley is here, he's the treasurer. I don't see Rick Lassar and Bill Freiter, and they're both on the board. We have one opening, which we decided to do something new this time, which was to advertise. And what's been amazing is we've gotten several very qualified people willing to serve, and I was pleasantly surprised by the number of very competent people who are available. I'm sure that's probably for any of these boards, but it was especially interesting for us. Right now, we serve about 200 accounts, so that's about 200 separate connections. There's 295 EDUs, that's equivalent dwelling units billed for. And we have basically one full-time licensed operator, her name is Pamela Parker, and she's in charge of the plant, testing, operating, and she's the primary point of contact with Department of Environmental Quality and interactions with customers. We have one half of a licensed operator, or should I say a half-time licensed operator, Troy Jenkins, and he's been there, I don't even know how many years, probably 15 or 20 years or more, and he does pretty much all of the maintenance and pump station work. He's, he's pretty amazing what he can get done with, very little. And we have a quarter-time assistant, Ellen Pullman, and she does testing, drives samples to culpeper, helps with the billing, and just basically what needs to be done. The plant in Sperryville and also the schools operate under a permit, and so the permit is with the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ. Right now, we're in a renewal, we're renewing our permit right now, so it is possible for some of our requirements to change, and that could involve new equipment and new procedures, but right now, we're in compliance. And there's basically daily testing, weekly samples which are taken into a lab, and monthly reporting, which is all required to stay in accord with our permit. We operate instead of a ordinance by a set of rules and regulations, and we adopted a new set in 2014, and these periodically are revised as new issues or things come up, including building, collections, application process, et cetera. And one difference is now, we're looking at, we're working with people on a permanent type of basis, where a permit is actually created, not just the old user agreement. It used to be that just that got carried forward and was not renewed, and we're trying to renew these and make new permits with each new owner. And one big question that keeps coming up, and I think you all may be the most interested in, is what is our capacity? And right now, we have a capacity of 55,000 gallons per day to discharge. We're about half of that right now, so that's really what our available capacity relates to is what we're actually using. And if we go up to 95 percent of that for, I forgot how many, three or four months out of six, then we have to make a plan to either reduce our outflow or increase capacity, which could involve the extension of the plant. So there's a few challenges. One thing that keeps coming up, and we haven't, I don't think we've really figured it out, what is the life expectancy of the plant? And originally, I think it was called a 30-year plant, and that was in 1985. And recently, we've done a fairly substantial renewal of the steel and finishing on the surge tank and one of the, well, one of the sides of the plant. I think that could have added maybe 20 years or so. Another thing is the collection system, which is all underground, it's mostly all PVC pipe and buried in bed of gravel, and I suppose that could be a very long lifespan. So, you know, there's some unknowns, but the collection system's pretty much all underground, and it's not really located that accurately. So that's something that's come up lately, is just being able to locate the lines when needed, like in a recent thing, VDOT contractor was putting guardrails in and pierced the line in several places, and so we're trying to figure out how to prevent that from happening, one of them being on this utility, which we were not registered with, which we showed them. Another thing is the groundwater infiltration, and apparently in Sperryville, the groundwater is very close to the surface, and so when we get rain like we have in the last few weeks, there's a substantial increase in the flow into the plant. So we have some ideas about how to deal with that, but that's basically probably infiltrating at the house side rather than in the collection side. So we're just trying to be systematic about that. Then the other thing is for this unknown, when do we need to replace the plant, or when do we need to upgrade it? We have accumulated about $300,000, which we have in money, I mean, in certificates of deposit. We do operate right now at about break-even. If, if all of the maintenance is done as we want to, which would be a positive maintenance, which would make it better rather than just maintaining it, but we probably do need to keep a extra surplus to keep building up money in case we need to do one of these increases. Our billing is done on a quarterly basis in arrears, that has, creates some issues on our accounts receivables and aging of them. And then the other thing, the other unknown that we're dealing with is DEQ or federal requirements. They're hard to predict, and they could change. So each time our license is renewed, there's a possibility that some new requirement would come in, like a copper level, for example, or nutrient level restriction or reduction. So that could cause, you know, not problems, but challenges for us in need of those, and maybe new equipment and processes. And basically, we're increasing slowly the number of customers. We charge a connection fee of $7,500 for each new connection, and the new connected party has to pay for their hardware or their equipment and the installation. There's a lower rate for commercial, which is half of that for each additional EDU. Then the last thing, I would just say about what we do, we are interested in working out something with the town of Washington if that presents itself, because we do believe that that would create a lot of economies of scale and potential redundancies, because one of the things about these plants is they need to be operated seven days a week, and that can make one operator kind of hard, so it's nice if you had it spread out over more people and more systems. And I guess one thing that I've noticed over the years is we have a number of, I call them chronic issues, like maybe there are a few delinquent accounts or the infiltration. There are things we may not solve, but I think we can keep working on them, you know, don't get too out of shape. We don't solve them all right away, but we're trying to keep it at a reasonable cost, do a, you know, job within the license. Any questions?
Could you go over that again?
I will say about the, since you brought that up. Ron came up with our last board member, it's actually a great addition, so I wanted to thank you, that Bill Freiter, I think you and Biden, so he's been a great addition to our team, and so we're hoping to do as well. Is there anything else?
Alex, how close to the existing sewer lines get to the schools? I mean, I know the schools have separate San Pitt and Menor Lagoon systems, is there ever any chance that they would be tied into the bigger system, or is that just expense too far?
Well, I mean, I think you'd have to just figure out, what does it cost to run a foot of sewer, like?
How far out to 11 is it?
Like, is it three miles?
It stops at the north corner of Thorpe. The north corner of Thorpe is the sewer lobby and point of stop.
Yeah.
So you're a few, you're a few good miles away from?
Yeah, I mean, that's been talked about, I think, there are reasons why they haven't done that. I don't know, there was even talk once of connecting the town of Washington to Sperryville, but then again, you can only discharge with so much, and I'm not sure how much load you want to put on any individual creature or river like that.
So if you have a house in Sperryville that's already hooked up to the system, and that turns over that selves, that new owner is responsible for that $7,500 hookup fee?
No, no, it's all, well, it's for new.
So what, so what time?
It's for a new connection, or there's also, if you change the use, for example, if you put, I don't know, a different business in or a restaurant or something, then that can create a new billable entity, and that's considered to be an expansion of use, and that would, we basically assess or try to figure that out.
And last thing, was there anything out of the general assembly this year with respect to the just-day water legislation that gives you guys any concerns, or?
Well, the latest this year, I'm not sure about this year, but there was some issues about billing and lean capability with rental units, and I think, I think we've dealt with that, and it's just, it's like, you know, that keeps coming up, we really only have a handful of rental units and maybe one or two that's on, so, you know, that's again one of those chronic problems that may never go away, but we're trying to figure it out. Actually, Taylor Odom, who helps us out, represents us and does some legal work for us, he actually went to the general assembly through, like, we were, and I think was able to get a little change in law and some clarification that I think helped us out. So it is possible to actually do that, you don't have to take all the lawsuits, yeah, it's unchangeable, so.
Is Mr. Odom still helping you even though he's moved to Charlotte some?
Yes, uh-huh, yeah, same, basically the same deal, it's just through a new firm. It's a, you know, not a huge expense, but we find it helpful.
Alex, are you a board member, compensate through your time?
No.
Strictly voluntary, yeah?
Right, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, is there anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your board, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Shenandoah National Park update, and we have a new, kind of, down for one?
Thank you for the call, you're welcome. Sure, for most people, it's perfectly hidden there.
You look good today.
I'm sure it did. Good afternoon, I am Jennifer Flynn, the superintendent at Shenandoah National Park, and thank you for inviting me to speak to you this afternoon about your national park. I've been the deputy superintendent at Shenandoah for the last seven years, but in January, I was selected and promoted after Jim Martha, our superintendent, retired, so I'm in a new role, but not a new park, so I'm very excited that I continue my service at Shenandoah. I've been with the National Park Service for 26 years, this is my seventh duty station, but it's the longest I've ever been in one spot, and I think it's a testament to, it's a pretty great part of the country to live in, and we're happy to be here. 2016 was a very good year for Shenandoah. Our visitation was up 8.3% from the prior year, from 15 to 1.45 million visitors. Our visitation was up 8.3% from the prior year, from 15 to 1.45 million visitors. The Park Service annually conducts an impact survey to look at how the visitor spending impacts our communities around us, and for last year, that was also up. In 2016, visitors spent $96.2 million in the surrounding communities around Shenandoah. And that's an indication of communities within 50 miles of the park boundary. So, if you take the park and draw up a bigger bubble around it, that's what they're looking at. That spending supported about 1,300 jobs. 300 of those are in the park with the Delaware North Company, but the vast majority of them are outside the park in our local areas. We are highly engaged on a variety of fronts with our communities. The Celebrate Shenandoah group has continued out of the park's 75th anniversary in 2011 and continues to be a real strong advocacy group for tourism and for the local areas. That group has been very, very effective at connecting the east and the west sides of the park. For a long time, the park served as a barrier between, communication between the Piedmont and the valley, and Celebrate Shenandoah has done an excellent job bridging that. The Branding and Promotion Subcommittee is probably the most active subcommittee, well, one of the more active subcommittees on that group, and they're working very hard on a collaborative website that would allow all counties to inform this website so that visitors to this local area could go to one place and be able to plan a trip that would take them all around the park. The Land Use Subcommittee is also another highly engaged group. They're working on a toolkit that will help board supervisors and local governments as their plant, as they're doing land management planning, and many, many of the things that Rapid Hennett County is already doing are incorporated into that toolkit, like the work you all have done around night sky protection. Rapid Hennett County does have two members, both of whom are at this table, of that, on that committee, and I'm sorry, Mr. Bennett? Not it, is that how you say it?
Bennett.
Bennett, I'm sorry, and Ms. Kaiser. The Blue Ridge Committee for Park Relations is another outstanding group, and that was established by congressional action in the 1980s. But that group continues to meet biannually. It's largely a forum for the community, the counties to bring issues forward to the park management and have us, give us an opportunity to have some dialogue. We just met a couple of weeks ago at Skyland, and it's really more turned into sort of a similar conversation to this, just an opportunity for us to share what's going on in the park and for folks to bring us any concerns they may have. Most recently, we addressed a concern that folks in Madison County had around hunting dogs. But largely, again, it's just information sharing. Ms. Kaiser's also on that committee with Mr. Parrish and Peter Luke also. The Blue Ridge Heritage Project has really gotten up steam, and you all just opened, just, let's be bold in it, but just had the ribbon cutting for the memorial here in Rapid Hennett County right up to 11. This is another way that the park, the park is a partner of this, we're not driving it, but it's another way that we're looking to recognize the families that were displaced by the creation of the park. Rapid Hennett and Madison have led the way. Green County has chosen their location, and Page County has broken ground. So, we hope to see memorials in all of the counties within the next couple of years. The status of the park partnerships within the park are very good. The Delaware North Corporation is going into their fifth year as our concessioner. If you haven't been in the park since Delaware North has taken over, I strongly urge you to come. The physical improvements that they have made to the buildings that are under their care are really tremendous. The Skyland Lodge entryway has totally been redone. Every single public bathroom has been redone. My children were stunned when they went in the first time. They came to find me and tell me how great the bathroom looked. So, they've really done a lot of work. The new contracts require that 6.6% of the revenue be turned back into the park for construction, for maintenance, and it really, really shows. The Toma Appalachian Trail Club is still our very strong partner as it relates to trail maintenance. The park has 500 miles of trails, and PATC helps us take care of 300 miles of those trails. The Shenandoah National Park Association is our education partner. They run the bookstores and the, in the two visitor centers, but they also provide direct support for educational programming. And 2016 was also a record year for them, when they broke a million dollars in sales for the first time. Shenandoah National Park Trust is our philanthropic partner, and they are just over 10 years old. Currently, they are funding 17 different projects within the park with $400,000 in financial support. So, they have become a very, very valuable partner for us. Internally, things have been a little, a little up in the air as we, as we change administrations, both nationally, regionally, and near the park. We did have a hiring freeze earlier this year for all federal employees. Thankfully, very, very quickly, our seasonal employees were allowed to be recruited. We hire about 125 temporary staff who work up a six-month appointment. So, those folks are all on board, but we still have about 20 positions that are vacant that we're just now getting permission to fill. So, we're working on filling some of those really crucial, crucial positions. Our goal is that the public won't be able to tell the difference, but our staff can. We're a little tired. Our status of the park budget, this year, we're operating on a continuing resolution from last year, so frankly, that, that's pretty good. We're, we're doing okay fiscally this year. The 2018 President's Budget just came out, and so we're, we'll see where that, where that ends, where we get back to that post through Congress. Special events for 2017, we had an event in April called Ride the Drive, which was a car-free day in the north district only, where we closed the Skyline Drive to vehicles on a Sunday. And mostly, it was targeted to cyclists, but we were really pleased to see lots of other folks too, people walking with children, rollerbladers, a few different types of mobility devices for folks who have mobility impairments. We had over 4,000 people register to participate, and unfortunately, the weather forecast was terrible. The actual weather didn't turn out to be so bad, but the forecast, we think, kept quite a few folks away. We only ended up with about 900 people. And we, we will see about offering that again. The recreational fee program, the entrance fees that are paid at the park, I just want to remind folks, stay at the park. 80% of those funds are kept at Shenandoah. The other 20% go to the Washington office to be redistributed to parks that don't, that are not able to collect fees, like the Blue Ridge Parkway, which by legislation is not allowed to collect a fee. We anticipate about $7.5 million in fee revenue this year, which will, which will translate into about $6.25 million for the park to spend. And we spend that on things like sewer treatment plants. We are currently replacing the entire sewer treatment plant package and every piece of piping at the Matthews Arm Campground. That's half funded by National Park and half funded by our fee program. So, every single thing we spend with those right fee dollars has to have a direct link back to the visitors and back to visitor support. We can't build ourselves a headquarters with it, a camping housing with it. It has to be something that directly supports the visitor's experience. I did want to remind you, we still have a few fee-free days left this year. August 25th, the National Park Service's birthday is always a fee-free day. September 30th, National Lands, National Public Lands Day will also be a fee-free day. And November 11th and 12th of Veterans Day weekend will be fee-free days. I mentioned already Matthews Arm Campground, that's the only closure we have right now, and that's awaiting the completion of that major sewer project. So, the campground has been delayed opening, it won't be open until September 1st, but we will, we do plan to be open through the fall to hit our highest visitation period. So, what's next for Shenandoah? When I first started with the National Park Service, there was this cult of realism, people would say, which was that our job was to protect the park from the people, to protect the people from the park, and to protect the people from the other people. That, you know, we really just had to focus on kind of keeping people safe within the park. But life has gotten much, much more complicated than that. Our challenge now is to continue to intrigue and interest visitors, to make sure that we have stewards moving forward, and to support and integrate better with our surrounding communities. For the longest times, the longest time, we kept parks kind of brought into this little box, and we looked really insularly, and we recognized for some time now that that is not any way that we're going to be able to move forward. For the first part, continuing to engage visitors, that was largely with our centennial celebration last year was about. Last year was 100th anniversary of the National Park Service, and I know Jim talked with you all about that in the fall. And that was largely very successful. You know, our visitation was up, and we were able to intrigue new audiences. We're looking at putting our maps and other, other publications into multiple languages. We've started with our brochure, our basic brochure and map. We now offer it in 12 different languages, and based on how many of those we're giving out, we're going to then decide what other languages to do some other publications in. We're also developing a park app for the first time, and I don't know how many millennials we have in the room, I'm embarrassed to say, I don't really know what to call it, except for it's a park app. But it's a visitor's guide, and it's something that folks can download in advance, will include trails. Right now, we're focusing on the components that deal with the front country, so Skyline Drive and the things immediately adjacent to Skyline Drive, but we hope to expand it eventually to include all the park trails and other activities. But visitor use is only part of our mission, so resource protection is the other. At Shenandoah, we're constantly vigilant for what the next resource threat might be to the forests and waters that the park protects, and we think about a lot of the same things the county does, energy development, invasive plants, insects, animals, diseases, water quality issues, air quality issues, view shed impairments, night sky pollution, light pollution, and climate change. We're a perpetuity organization. We're trying to strike that delicate balance between access and protection that is required for us as a perpetuity organization. And in that effort, we know that we are not alone, and we, we very much look forward to continuing to work with you, our neighbors and our friends in the years to come as we face these challenges that affect all of us. This time, I would be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Jim, when you say you have 20 positions open, how many total positions are there parked? What percentage of that is, are you talking about?
It's about 5%. And we usually see about a 5% turnover. Why we're kind of in a put under right now is we just weren't able to act to that turnover that just naturally occurred. So, for example, my old position, the deputy superintendent, has been frozen. Our administrative officer promoted to another park as a deputy superintendent, that's sitting empty. Our safety officer retired. So, it's not been a mass exodus, but it, it's just the normal turnover that we haven't been able to respond to.
Two questions. One, the Emerald Ash problem, is that something that cannot be solved? I mean, that's something discussed a bunch happen.
Yes. I mean, we've, we've tried some, some, I think we've tried some soil injection on, on targeted trees, specifically trees that have what we consider a target, you know, within the developed areas that if they die, would potentially, you know, threaten people. But no, at this point, it's everywhere in the park, and we started to see die off in the north district already.
And then, how about the wasting disease with deer? Has that been kept at bay away from the board?
So far. So, chronic wasting disease, some folks in the room may recall, we went through two public planning processes as it relates to chronic wasting disease. In 2010-ish, we did a plan on how we would detect if it was getting close to the, if it was in the park, and then really quickly realized that we had to get a response plan in place. And so, we amended the plan to include response probably 2014 or so. So, we have our plan ready to go, but at this point, the closest case is still beyond the 10-mile, 10-mile mark. It's still north of the park, kind of on the other side of 81, but it's in Virginia.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. My children went to daycare here, so I, I spent a lot of time with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
The treasurer's report is online for your review. A brief overview, though, today is that we are in the last month of our budget, so we should be at 91% of our budget. And actually, our overall expenses fall at 79.86%. Our revenue is in at 98.28% for the year, which is great. And as you know, we are in the last month, but we want to have a second meeting at the end of the month, so it's scheduled for June 29th for all last invoices for the year. So, the board will be meeting that morning to conduct business, to approve any last-minute invoices or appropriations.
Next slide, accounts payable.
The accounts payable is online also for your review. We had a slight issue with the Keystone, kind of a glitch in their programming, so there was a difference of $777. It did not print an extra check, but it printed, it printed an extra line on the report. So, Ms. Nick is going to work with them and get that cleared up. In the meantime, we do have three accounts payable runs online today, and the correct amount that you need to approve today is $345,000, $345,650.58. So, that's 345,650.58.
Mr. Chairman, if I might? I would just love to draw up a couple of things on the treasurer's report. One, one thing that I did notice, it seemed like one area of grid conservative support has passed, and specifically public assistance, mental health, comprehensive services, and welfare, it looks like we're somewhere between 85 and 90% projected budget. So, I would like to think that hopefully that situation is stabilizing, although it could change quickly, unless I read something wrong there.
It could change quickly, but we are getting close to the end of the year. We did put the additional monies in there to cover that, and we are anticipating coming in a budget on that.
Okay, so that is with the additional monies that we, okay, so.
Yes, it is.
All right. And then, the other point was, and I know we're going to get to this later with respect to building and grounds, but I, I noticed we're about $190,000 unused, and if I've got that right, I'm sure we'd be good to start using that money for, I know we're going to build a task force, just going to talk there a little bit, just to continue to focus on whatever we can to utilize, utilize that money.
The maintenance department has a number of things that are in it, which can be for rent, it's also for trash collection. So, the money that I put on the appropriation today for $70,000 is out of the one item for maintenance, building and grounds, which has around $82,000 in the balance. So, we're hoping that we've given a good number to you as to what we think will be left, and that we can roll over. So, we are anticipating some bills coming in out of that $92,000, so.
Thank you. How many accounts payable are continuing to form our history with $8,700?
We provide them with a contribution on an annual basis each year, and that is our fee that we paid to them.
While we're on accounts payable, are we doing anything with tagging that cargo truck? That's to be done by Joe Niggs.
I'm sure that it's tagged, that that one's been tagged, the other one has not.
The van, not the one shouldn't be tagged.
It's not, but the other one is.
That's right.
So, maybe we can get a motion to, maybe we'll sign it, now a motion to, maybe bills. I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second to prove the accounts payable. All of the people say aye.
Aye.
All of the votes aye. Bills are taken. One chair, then the Congress, two.
Under appropriations, Mr. Chairman, I have a problem with this one with under finances for the BCA. I don't understand why this board is, is going down this way for one thing. $20,000 set aside?
Last year on the budget, we put aside $5,000 for potential BCA litigation, which is still in process. So, what I did is put in $5,000 to continue for the BCA. I don't believe we paid anything on that yet, but that was the potential anticipated cost. Last year, the board threw Last year, the board threw $100,000 out of the litigation fund, and we now have insurance coverage, which we did not have last year, which will cover the board supervisors on an individual basis per FOIA, which is now allowed by law. So you will be covered under the new insurance policy. I put in $15,000 for potential litigation. You can certainly take that out if you don't mind.
The BCA thing is not really litigation. It's just a question before the court whether the BCA acted properly within the parameters of the law that covered the BCA.
I think the BCA members feel that they need someone that they can turn to, to ask questions, and that would be an attorney that they've hired. So whether it's a lawsuit or not, I think they feel that they need someone that they can ask, and Mr. Golf is not the right person for that.
Should I add?
It's an internal conflict, because he would represent me or any appeals that came against my decision. So he was fine to file the papers for them, but he does not want to represent them.
Well, this says litigation supplement. Is it a litigation supplement, or is it to give them legal counsel?
Potentially both, but probably more just to give them counsel. And that would be $5,000, and then the other money I put in is for the litigation fund that can be done.
Because I don't see why the county attorney can't serve as legal counsel to the BCA until there is a lawsuit.
Just a point of clarification here. These are transfers, is that correct, from budget line items that are already in the FY17 budget?
That's correct.
It's just, it's not an additional appropriation, it's not additional monies being asked for in the way.
What it's really doing is rolling the funds in that we put in this year to next year. The way that the budget would work is that at the beginning of every fiscal year, everything starts out with whatever the number is in the budget. And so if we don't put anything in there, there's nothing in the litigation line for next year.
Well, this isn't appropriation. This is netted. This money doesn't exist for the BCA for legal counsel.
It does. It was put in this year. It was approved.
Not to this amount. This is $20,000.
For $5,000. And then I added $15,000, because you had $100,000 last year. You used $30,000, so that leaves a balance of 70.
If I could, did the BCA vote to ask for this?
Yes.
They voted to ask for this, because they're a separate entity. They have to actually have a vote to both hire counsel and to seek discounted money.
They did vote for fiscal year 17. I don't know that they voted specifically, but they made inquiries and wanted that money to be here. You don't vote.
Didn't sport not pass a resolution in the last month or the month before, specifically about the hiring counsel to the BCA? Of course, I didn't have a vote on a resolution to do that.
For the county attorney. No litigation.
We've done BCA resolutions, while. It was earlier in the year.
But we can do all that we want to, but that board has to actually have a vote, too.
And they did.
Because they are private entities.
They did have a vote.
They did have a vote. It's not in their wills.
Yes. But it's for fiscal year 17. They did not formally vote for fiscal year 18, that I'm aware of, for this, but they did make an inquiry since they did want it to continue.
But there's no record of that.
There is a record for fiscal year 17.
Where's that? I haven't seen it. I can't find it.
I will find it for you.
Would it hurt the BCA if we were to table this, to answer some of Mr. Fraser's questions, and then go on to 29th?
Yeah, we should come up with what you need by then.
By when?
Five to 29th.
That would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you for, yes, we'll be back.
Okay, under the sheriff's appropriation, the first item that we have, I think I just get the first one, go to the second one. The second one is a request for $5,000 to be moved from vehicle and power equipment to police supplies. So it would be moved from 100-4-03102, 5408, to 100-4-03102, 5413.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion.
Correct. I move that we approve the internal transfer of those $5,000 for the sheriff's office.
I'll say, ma'am. I'll listen, Megan, and second. We don't need a road call, please. All those who say aye.
Aye.
All those who say aye. Got a truck.
The first item is not an appropriation. This is something that the sheriff wants to purchase. The total is $8,942.76. She has the money in her budget. Today, you are looking at a policy that talks about capital expenditures and coming before the board to get an approval. So although that hasn't been approved, the sheriff is being precautionary in asking for permission to spend the $8,942.76, which is in her budget, with available funds.
There's been a problem before. If that's a motion, I'll second it.
No, be it. All those who say aye.
Aye.
All those who say aye. Thank you. Anything else? You got two, that's it.
I have one.
With respect to the first matter, the transfer of funds, do you do each one of those individually, or can we just make a motion with the exception of the BCA litigation?
I'm sorry, say that.
Do you need a motion? First, we started off here with this farm tour and celebrate Shenandoah, and maintenance, $7,000 in maintenance to transfer that. Do you need a motion for that?
I think they all need to be done separately.
Separately, yes.
The first one is for the fund tour. It's for $1,523.50. Deborah Nick and I have talked, and these are funds that are not part of the county funds. These are funds that come from the community, and the county is housing those funds for these entities. It gets very confusing, because we estimated the budget, how much they're going to bring in. So sometimes a farm tour can bring in $7,000, but our budget will show $7,000, but they really only bring in $5,000. So it looks like they have more money. Just to be very clear in our accounting and to approve our processes, Ms. Nick has kindly agreed to manage a separate fund for the farm tour, and she also has for the celebrate Shenandoah, which she is also currently doing for the parks and rec. So they would have their own separate checking account. They would have their own person that would sign off. The funds would not be intermingled with the county. They would have their own separate account, and then it would be very clear how much money they've taken in and how much money they have spent. So the $1,523.50 that is before you today is the money that the farm tour has collected. And so what we would like to do is to move it completely out of the budget toward a separate account, so it becomes a wash in the budget.
Do you need a motion?
I do.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, and second. All those who say aye.
Aye.
All those who say aye.
Okay, the next one is the celebrate Shenandoah. As you heard earlier from Jennifer Flynn from Shenandoah National Park, the celebrate Shenandoah is working on a website. These are the funds that all of the surrounding counties have paid over the last couple of years, and that has amounted to $11,001.99. So again, this is not county money. This is money that has been sent in by all of the counties, and this will be removed completely from our budget and set up as a separate account.
I'll also make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made, and second. All those who say aye.
Aye.
All those who say aye.
I want to say thank you today for cleaning up our budget a little bit better and taking charge of these new entities.
Okay, the next item is the litigation for the BCA. So we will work on the documentation for Mr. Fraser and present that at the June 29th meeting. And the last item is maintenance, 100-4-04302, in the amount of $70,000. So that is money that will be rolled over from this year into next year's budget, in addition to the money that's already in the line item, so that we have additional funds based on what the task force recommends to be done for next year.
Is that the form of a motion? I'll second that.
Motion made, and second. All those who say aye.
Aye.
All those who say aye. I'm prepared. Last one?
Last one.
Public comment.
I need to go back and get this sheet.
I'll sign it.
But before I do that, I just wanted to take a minute, two things. One is, is that I wanted to introduce the audience to Mr. Jack Tennessee. He is here in lieu of the vacationing Art Golf today. He's the retired Commonwealth attorney for Page County, so we thank him for being here today, in case you wondered who was joining us. And then, secondly, I wanted to let you know that the board of supervisors is concerned and respectful over making sure that the notices that we send for all these special exceptions and special use are done correctly. We realize that there may be some issues with what was sent out for Mr. Fletcher's application, so therefore, the board will not be making a decision tonight on that application, but we'll be hearing the folks that have comments. It's a really large application, as you can imagine, with a lot of things to consider. So none of that's to be taken lightly. So they want to hear from you, and so therefore, I just wanted you to be aware of that before we begin a public comment, that it's not going to be something that will be done in haste tonight.
Excuse me, clarification. Are you saying that the notices weren't sent properly?
I'm not sure that they were. There's questions to whether they were or not, so.
If they weren't sent properly, I don't know that we have the ability to even hear the application.
We're just going to have a public comment.
A public comment on what? A public comment, and I'm a public comment on the application, because if you're having a public comment on the application, you're considering the application. You can't do both of them. You can't have comments on the application.
You can't control the people. Comment on, I mean, they're going to get up and make their comments, and this is something that they're concerned about, if they are.
Public comment is one thing, but a public hearing on the application is something different.
Right.
So are we not having a public hearing on the application?
We can have public comment on it tonight, that's fine. I think that there's a possibility that you may send it back to the planning commission for more work, and if you do that, then we can certainly re-adaptize it and make sure that it's.
But for a point of order, if it's not properly advertised, or the notices weren't sent properly, then it's not eligible for the board, and we can't have a public hearing.
We can have a public comment.
Not only that, it is.
The notices were sent, they're now going through, I forget, Maryfield, so there is a delay. There is something in the code that suggests that if you receive a notice, then you did receive the notice. I don't know.
I'm not arguing whether they were or weren't. I'm asking the question, if they weren't properly noticed, then we can't have a public hearing.
I think it's unclear as to whether it was done correctly. I think we could probably say that it was, but I think that we want to err on the side of caution, so that everyone has an opportunity to see.
That's the one thing to determine, are we having an official public hearing or not?
Tonight?
I would say public comment.
We can't have public comment on an application that's not properly before the board.
What do you ask, too?
I haven't asked, I'm asking the county administrator, if the notices, if the notices were not properly sent out and you can't have the public hearing, then I don't see how legally we can have public comment on an application that's not properly before the board.
So I believe you could have, you could make comments, you know, if you have on the agenda, public comments on anything that's eventually going to come before the board. Does that understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, the discussion right now is whether you're going to delay the official public hearing to some other time, is that right?
Exactly, but if it's not an official public hearing, the board has no ability to hear comments on it.
I believe the board has the ability to hear anything that any comment so desires.
Now, I mean. If the land use decision is an application, and the application is not properly before this board, what business does this board have in holding conversations about private piece of property?
Well, if I may be the planning commission representative to the board, the application did come before the planning commission, and the question I think there is whether or not everybody received, adjoining property owners received their notice within the days required by law. I understand this Maryfield post office thing is a new wrinkle, and it adds a day or two more than expected to. So I think the ambiguity here is that some do receive notice in time, and others did not. So, and then there's been further awareness in the community through, whether it's the newspaper or appearing on the agenda here, who would address it. So I think there's an expectation in the community, that they would have the opportunity today to come forward and, you know, of course, we've received a lot of emails and a lot of those, and letters, and those are on board docs, and we have a lot of people that are expecting this board to take it up with consideration.
I understand that. But my question is, did the notices all go out to the adjoining property owners?
Yes.
Everyone?
Yes.
But they may not have been delivered.
They were delivered. They weren't delivered potentially in time.
So some received them in time, and some did not, but it's potentially.
But I know that the law requires it to be received in all time, but if you have, you did send it, and you have certification, it's validated then.
Again, may I speak? Sir, I don't, you want to cut me off, just say shut up. Did all the adjoining property members, owners appear?
No.
Okay. And as to the one that didn't, those that did or did not appear, was there an issue concerning whether they had notice, or was it five days they have to have it? I believe it is.
Eight days.
Five days before the planning commission's hearing. But the question is, did, is, do those things match up? Of course, you said I didn't, five days notice, is that the same party that finished here?
There were a lot of emails from individuals to adjoining property that did not make it to the planning commission meeting because they were unaware, because they were like, came in, got tied up in the mail, and didn't come in in time.
So maybe.
So we can, it's on the agenda, if it weren't right here, there's no reason to change that.
Well, maybe the budget was a caution, and it would just be, I know, an imposition on the planning commission, but to remand a matter to the planning commission with the direction to whoever the, you know, I guess it's the county administrator, it's not just the county administrator, too, just to go ahead and pick out a date and get, do real, do new notices and apologize to the folks here for. and apologize to folks here for, out there to say something. And I see your point, you're saying, look, you're either going to have a hearing, you're not going to have a hearing, and you got a point there. And I'm just saying that, and I'm new at this, by the way. And by the way, I'm not charging for today. Shouldn't charge for it.
We're there, Penny, Jack.
Anyway. Anyway, what I'm trying to say is that if it's an imposition of the planning commission, it's an imposition on citizens, to be abundantly careful procedurally, remand it back to the planning commission with the direction that they pick out a date, have a new hearing, give planning notice, hopefully. And I know, I know that, I looked at this concept, like I say, I'm brand new to this stuff. But it looked like, you know, the ordinary snail mail is approved. And I guess for adjoining owners, maybe certified mail might be better, even though it's kind of expensive proposition. Was it, was it ten bucks a shot now? Certified mail, roughly? I don't know too much. Anyway, next, how many in twenty-nine, I'm going to hit you, put you guys in a spot. Give me a proxy number, how many?
I think it's at least a half a dozen.
Huh?
I would say in the neighborhood of a half a dozen, four or six.
Half a dozen, so we're talking six, yeah. If you're talking certified mail, sixty bucks, might be good to do it that way. You know, that way you'd have it, you know. By the way, the section says if you've had actual notice, and at least in criminal law, actual notice, like in suspended licenses, is the deputy walks up to you and says, John Doe, you know, you're suspended. And that's sufficient for the actual notice. But actual notice, if you've sent them out, you know, they received it, signed for it, that would probably suit for actual notice.
Well, I recommend that, I don't, it's on the agenda that we're going to hear this application tonight, and you can decide tonight if you're going to do with it. And, you know, I don't, I don't really think that we should cancel the public comment. So I'd say let's go ahead and proceed with the public comment, it's appropriate time to do that. Any other comment?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public comment, which means that anyone resigning to speak will have the opportunity to do so. The rules are very, very simple. When recognized, please state your name and district herein. Direct your comments to the Board. Try to limit your comments to three or five minutes, and I declare the public comment off. Oh, excuse me, I have a signee, Shane. This is Ron Goodman, that, you're first.
Approach this.
Yes, sir.
voting has the same problem for me.
We got a deep voting.
I'm much taller than Jennifer, but all. And I'm speaking, my name is Ron Goodman, my wife and I, Roosevelt, and I own property at the end of Barrett Lane, land on Route five-twenty-two, after the entrance of the property here issued, which is owned by Thornton Hill LLC. I've been, I'm speaking under the assurance by Ms. Kaiser that my speaking now does not detract from my ability to speak this evening. And I wanted to speak now because in fact, exactly the topic you were just talking about, I thought should be addressed rather now, later. I should point out that in fact, you would be waiving your right to proper notice if in fact you appeared at the planning commission meeting, and that you waived your right to notice, that's how the statute's written. But we, in fact, nobody appeared at the planning commission who were from adjoining neighbors, except for Mr. Fletcher, who is adjoining to Thornton Hill LLC. Thornton Hill LLC is a company that owns the property in question, and that company is owned by, in majority by its son, and the LLC owns the property. The notice was not as legal required, and although the certificate of mailing of the county says the notice was mailed by, certified by regular, for some reason that appears not to be the case. So we have evidence of a postmark on the envelopes that were sent out at the end of the day, on the following day after it was stated to have been mailed, at five o'clock in the afternoon, and with the postmark Northern Virginia. So the state, legally, the state law, noticed provisions without a due due, and that means that everything thereafter, including the planning commission recommendation, and any decision taken by this Board would be void. State law's very clear, it allows the county to give more than minimum notice. You would think that with such a far-reaching, enormously significant application, the county would have seen its way to provide a little more than the minimum notice, as it intended to do, but which in fact never happened. Now, even had those notices been mailed out on the legally correct day, one could hope for delivery on Saturday or Monday before the Wednesday meeting, at best. Two days before the planning commission meeting, considering this far-reaching application with potentially significant consequences for all adjoining and nearby neighbors, that doesn't seem wrong to adjust. But in any event, it is our position that they were not legally provided on the correct notice. Now, let's look at the actual notice. We've been focusing on the, you know, amount of notice in terms of days. The notice itself gives notice that a Board of Zoning Appeals, BCA, public hearing will be held at seven PM on May seventeenth, consider this application. Then later down in the notice, it says the planning commission meeting will be presented with this application at its meeting at seven-thirty on the same date. Call it clear notice, would you? The notice states that Mr. Bill Fletcher, owner of the property, is the one who desires, I'll use that word because that's in the notice, the permit. But if we know he's not the owner of the property, a company, Thornton Hill LLC, is actually owned by his son, as I said, he owns the property. So Mr. Fletcher, who's Mr. Bill Fletcher the third, I think it is, cannot be the applicant. The notice actually names him as the applicant. Furthermore, it seems that the property may be encumbered. What I mean by that? The attendants, which Mr. Fletcher identifies as his residence in the application, is, pays rent, this is in Thornton Hill Avenue, pays rent to Mr. Fletcher for the rent of that property. Now, we have no idea whether they've been contacted as to the use of the candles and the land, which they have been allowed to use by payments of Mr. Fletcher, whether they've been contacted and have had any notice and had any input for the use of land on which they have a right to use. So the rights there haven't been considered, nor have they been noticed on this. Now, I'd say the planning commission made its recommendation on the basis of the application before, and with no negative commentary made at the meeting because of the lack of sufficient and legal notice. But we've shown that the application before, before the planning commission was quite misleading. Can't quite blame the planning, planning commission on this. If you look at pages two to three of the joint letter which we submitted on May thirty-first, you'll see a whole listing of the misleading aspects. And we'll recall perhaps the, closely produced, the eleven-page letter that we submitted, that the, that in fact, the attachment that Mr. Fletcher attached to his applications said closest neighbor, one, closest neighbor. And he actually said that there are no close neighbors. He said, I should say, where was it now? With, there are no close neighbors in proximity to the farm, C attachment, that's his attachment, and the intent to maintain the natural farm setting, preserve the land as it is, is what makes it a perfect venue. But there are close neighbors, as the joint letter clearly indicates. The attachment to Mr. Fletcher's letter shall be seen highly inaccurate in showing one closest neighbor, who's in fact, not in fact, the closest neighbor, and which amidst six abutting or adjoining neighbors, and more than three close neighbors, who do not actually abut the Fletcher land, or the, I should say, the Thornton Hill land. And of course, I won't comment that much about the intent that he says to maintain the natural farm setting, that's something for this evening. Just to let you think about with an event involving thousands every summer weekend, how that will be done. We think, therefore, that in fact, this application is not properly noticed, it is misleading, which means the planning commission could not have made a wise or informed decision based on what was before it. And therefore, the notice provision itself would void, would void the planning commission, whatever it did in terms of the recommendation that it made. If it was void, then in fact, there is no meeting that can possibly at the third tonight on something which is, would be based on trying to figure out whether the planning commission is void, its recommendation is void or not. How can we have a sensible meeting, an informed meeting, when in fact, the proceedings before this Board would be in fact, void? The planning commission is itself void abenicio, under the statute, under Virginia statute. And that statute, I've written down somewhere, the number, but I think it is something that could provide if anybody has any curiosity.
What is that word, abenicio, would you say?
That's from the beginning, that is, there is no validity to the, to the meeting or anything that came out of the meeting. So it's very sitting of the planning commission, it's itself void. And anything done of that, that would be void. It seems to me an incredible waste of time to have a public hearing this evening when people were not noticed in time for the planning commission meeting. And I think that the suggestion is that this, either the application needs to be rejected or it needs to be sent back to the planning commission with proper notice, and let's not waste our time tonight. We will have to hear the public objections or the public comments or the public approval at the proper time when the proper procedures have been followed. So that is our comments. Thank you very much for the time and the effort.
Thank you. Mr. Arden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Phil O'Leary, I'm Sean Hill. First, I'd like to thank the Lord for, again, inviting Mr. Holt to set up the sound system, which enables us, the audience, to fully participate in your deliberations. It has made a significant difference. However, may I make one observation, and that is that a microphone has to be talked into, and if it's going to be useful at all, it should be somewhere in the vicinity of one fist away from the source of the sound. We'd appreciate if we would get you a little bit closer to the microphone. Thank you. Again, I would like to thank the Board for its support of the farm tour. I can report that the Board, the committee that's working on setting it up for this year is coming along very nicely, and now that we have the financial startup money, it will help. It's one of the great organizations in the county. The next thing is that next Saturday, there'll be an open house at my farm. Back about two years ago now, the Bradmanic League for Environmental Protection, RVP, and Virginia Sun, set up a solar cooperative. And the result of that co-op now, I believe, has about thirty-eight properties in Bradmanic County that are generating electricity from the sun and supporting, supporting, I should say, the power company. This that day from ten until two, open house at my place, which is one of the first solar installations of the recent co-op. And it'll be supporting anybody who's interested in joining, in second co-op for the same purpose. And finally, a couple of months ago, I suggested that the Board consider, was known as a consent agenda. And I do hope that you will indeed consider that. I favorably, had favorable responses to the original idea, and I'm waiting for the consideration of deducting that for Bradmanic County. All of our surrounding counties using consent attended, and I highly recommend it to avoid any further problems that people might have with the conduct of the Board. Consider agenda, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon?
Yes, my name is Sharon Popper, from Sperryville area. The gentleman would speak. Do you have a gentleman?
Come on in.
Yes, he said, and then what I was thinking about saying. Sure. All right, thank you very much.
Anyone else here to speak? Yes.
I'm Jane Mcillopin-Jackson, District. And I hadn't planned to speak today, but I do want to say that it does appear that there were some problems with the way that the issue was approached, both with the notice and with the name of the applicant being incorrect. Can't blame the planning commission for that, certainly can't blame any of you for that. But I would ask that you consider cancelling the public hearing this evening. Perhaps if it's permissible, adding a second extended comment section this evening at seven o'clock to continue the meeting, to allow anyone who comes to make whatever comments they choose on whatever issue. But I would say that it seems to me that that would be the right decision.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else here to speak? Yes.
Henry Colfield, I'm with the Antipostive. Can I go and understand, what's the difference between you have a public hearing and comment on the budget, but you're not ready to vote on it? Or is something like you're doing? To me, it seems all you're doing is gathering information and giving the public a chance to talk. You've decided you're not going to vote on it, and that's the same thing you do with budget meetings. You invite the public, they allow to vent, and then you can, you know, then, so we're down the line, you make the decision. In fact, it's better for the public because it gives them more than one opportunity to get up and say what you, you know, what they would like to say. So I think with a lot of people, citizens in this county who have already made plans to come to this meeting tonight, I would suggest that you keep the meeting and take what action you, you see appropriate if you want to send it back to the, to the planning commission, that's terrific. The other question I have, I understand that we're going to have a new zoning administrator, and I know I'm going to get myself in trouble with this, but I would like you to consider that part of his duties, be it periodically or, is to check to see if people are actually holding to what they promised in, when they apply for special use permits and special exceptions. The county seems to put pressure, if somebody is not in conformance, on fellow citizens to report or snitch, or whatever you want to call it. And since you, the people that, that are, you know, authorizing this, I think the county should have somebody who is authorized to go around and say, listen, you've said you can do this and this and this, or you're going to do that and that, and you haven't done it, and you've got ninety days to fulfill your contractual obligation. Or then you could take action against them to see what's happening. And the other part of it, it would keep neighbors from trying to kill each other. I have seen more arguments about zoning between neighbors than I have seen about anything else in this town. So I think you ought to have an official representation, representative who does this kind of basically checking up to see if people... kind of basically checking up to see if people are doing what they're supposed to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Anyone else care to speak? Now, sir, public comments, please. Any comments from the Board?
Mr. Eadie, what I said before, Mr. Chairman, if the meeting notices were not done properly, then we have federal authority to even hold a public hearing. If we haven't met the requirements of statute, I don't see how it's relevant before the Board. Why don't we just decide tonight if we're gonna do the, entertain the application for postponing, if we're not sure, I mean, if I have any way of knowing. And so, maybe you have something to think about, you said, we can decide tonight. You can allow some sort of public comment, because that's basically what the seven o'clock meetings were instituted for, but I, I have to argue, you know.
Just as far as I go, Mr. Chairman, we do have to meet this evening on another matter. This is not the only issue tonight, to the extent there's public comment already on the agenda. Say what they would like about the topic that they choose to address.
Not like you're going to old business.
First, I want to discuss the county business. We have a budget that is online, that is dated six, two of seventeen, which is the latest version of the budget, which you would be approving. As required, we adopted the school floor budget and level funding. May eighth, we had a public hearing, excuse me, on the county budget. It's been advertised in the papers, so before you today is a budget for your approval, again, dated June second, two thousand and seventeen. The changes that are in effect, we took out three hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the budget, and we created a radio line within the fire fund. Today, we removed the farm tour revenue, we removed the celebration, the revenue. We added an increase toward Fairfax in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-six dollars, and I requested a loan item, a new loan item for zoning fees, zoning revenue, in the amount of four thousand dollars. Also, the BCA asked for an increase of a net of one thousand dollars to increase their fees for their monthly attendance to attend the BCA meeting. And the only item left that we, we need to think about would be a borrowing resolution, which would be for next year. So we'll have that in July, for consideration and approval. So those are the items that have been adjusted, so there's a public hearing.
Still, may I vote?
I do have on here that to have a public comment on the county budget, so I don't know if you have any discussion items, but you may want to open it up for public comment for last minute, before you actually approve the budget.
No, we can do that. Open comment on the county budgets. Anyone that's on to speak may do so, please state your name, the district you're in. The record comments, put them over. Now, declare a public comment on the budget. Then, one week to comment. Let us clear a public comment. Well, that's it. Item number four, budget itself.
Mr. Chairman, while we're still, before we beat it up, it says, discussion of county policies, and I think that maybe we ought to discuss that a little bit more if we could. But I don't see it on the agenda, you know, we were supposed to have another meeting in May that we never did get it scheduled. We were supposed to adopt the change orders to the radio program. I don't see that one on the agenda. I just wonder, you know, what happened to things like that? That has to be approved by this Board.
I'll, I'll answer for that.
That doesn't really have to do with the budget, it was savings of three hundred and forty-eight dollars.
It was the county policy, as a county policy, it was a change order, it needed to be approved, and it's forced, we never had a meeting to do so, I just wonder what happened to it.
I signed off on it.
You didn't have any authority. It was a hundred and forty thousand dollars with the change orders, with a contract.
We had our consultant approve that we had county surroundings assert that we were holding up the contract.
All we had to do was have a meeting.
We did.
I, I asked twice, I asked on the eleventh, and I asked on the seventeenth. How long did Mr. Burke have that before he gave it to the Board on May fifth? And I never got an answer to my question.
There was only several days, or it was that day, he was asking, we were supposed to get.
He said that they'd already approved it, that when he showed it to us that day, he said it was already approved by those counties, and I asked twice on the eleventh and the seventeenth. When did he get that, and I have not got that answer yet.
He got it that day.
He got it that day.
He got it that day because.
Why couldn't I got that answer on the eleventh? I asked for it the eleventh and the seventeenth, and I'm hearing it for the first time on June fifth.
He got it that day, and we were supposed to have gotten a refund for the tower, and it was a difference of a significant amount of money, and he was waiting to hear how much that was going to be. So until that was resolved, there was no way that they'd give us the change order in the legislature.
Now, they had that discussion before May fifth, he knew that they weren't going to give any significant money back.
I don't believe that he thought that there was a possibility.
I don't know what he thought, but we'd already had that conversation, I know, I would already heard him for the conversation, there was no significant money being spent on that one item. But I'm, I'm asking a question specifically right now, why did I ask a question on May eleventh, and on May seventeenth, I'm just finding out on June fifth?
I don't remember.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is a repeat problem, I don't know what's happening. When, when a member of this Board asks for information, it ought to be forthcoming. Why, why is it not, does anybody else have that information?
I, I'll say that I asked her to sign that.
But we should do it outside of an open meeting, this Board has no authority to authorize things like that outside of an open meeting.
It seemed to be that time was of the essence, and.
No, sir, no, well, we had, we had a meeting scheduled, and it didn't happen, I mean, we were trying to schedule a meeting, it didn't happen. When you say time was of the essence, conduct business outside of the public view is not proper. It's not proper at all. The processes are still broken, and we should not be supported with that. And I, I really, I, I want to be on her record that I asked for information, and I do not get it, and I cannot properly represent Jackson District if I don't get the information that I request. This Board has now notified that my people are not doing properly, but I present it, because I cannot get the information when I have it. I can't get it at all, but well, we had a time of the matter.
Well, you're doing better than I am, because I didn't even know about it at all.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm doing the best I can, but if I ask for the information, it ought to be available, or it ought to be, ought to be told that it's not available, that it doesn't exist. We cannot make proper decisions without information, and we can't make decisions outside of open meetings. I thought we would have learned that.
So I'm going to give a slow one on the Board here, and ask this issue be, this amount be described again, so it's a one hundred and forty thousand dollar.
Well, that's a wrong.
This is part of the radio contract?
Yes, sir. It was about seventy thousand dollars worth of changes that they had deleted, and then there was about seventy thousand dollars worth of additions or redemptions in the contract. A total of a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of change orders. Because of the ten percent agreement, and because of how it affected this county, we only had three hundred and fifty-nine dollar cost of that effect. But I asked two questions, I wanted to know, when did Mr. Burke receive the information, and how did it affect this county? How did those change orders affect Rappahannock County's part of the contract? I still don't have that question, I did get the answer to the first one.
So we, per Rappahannock Sheriff, Rappahannock, of the change orders is approximately three hundred and sixty dollars?
Oh, I would like to point out that at a public hearing, at a Board Supervisor's meeting, we Supervisors gave the County Administrator authority to sign that agreement.
Sign the original contract?
And that's what she did.
The original contract?
Well, we didn't specify original.
We didn't specify anything different.
We specified.
There wasn't anything else in front of us that day?
I know, we specified, we gave her the authority to use her judgment, to sign.
We didn't give her, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't, not to use her judgment. That language was not in that resolution. We authorized the county administrator to sign.
The agreement, and we didn't say what agreement, we just said we authorized.
No, sir, go back and look at it, it was a seven hundred and sixty thousand dollar contract. That's what we authorized someone to sign, on behalf of this Board, not to use her judgment. That language is not in that resolution.
Well, I, I think it's on page, but I think you go back.
It doesn't matter what's on page, it's what was written, and it's not the motion, it did not say anybody's judgment, it was a seven hundred and sixty thousand dollar contract that we authorized this contract to sign, we had for this Board.
We authorized her to sign the contract, we didn't go into it, we didn't.
This is a change order to the contract, they would have to take requirement on this one of that.
We didn't go into that, we didn't say which contract, we didn't say where it would be in the future, we didn't say anything like that, we just authorized her to use her judgment to sign.
No, we did not authorize her to use her judgment.
It's on the text.
But that language is not in there. You know for a fact it says to use her judgment. Do you know that for a fact?
I didn't, I.
You said that four times.
Yeah, yeah.
So you know that for a fact.
That was the intent.
No, what does it say? It's not the intent, it's what the language is. Well, the language is not authorized by the use of judgment.
I think Mr. Fraser made your point.
No, sir, I have not, because we're still discussing it. How, how come you always want to cut me off? You always try to cut me off, Mr. Chairman, before the discussion is completed. I do not understand that. You just told me that you didn't know about it, and then when I tried to find out information, you don't want to hear about it. And I don't understand it. And it really is getting to be aggravating, to the point where this Board cannot function because we cannot get to the end of a discussion, we can't get to the end of a problem, because you want to cut off the bidding, simply because I asked one of the other members, what a County Administrator appointed question. I cannot, I cannot represent the voters of my district if I don't have this information, and when things are done contrary to the public good. And that's what I'm trying to determine here. That's all it is.
I maintain that the process did serve the public, but you can disagree with me, that's fine, but I don't think we're going to get any further on this, because it's done, and we're not going.
It was done outside the norm.
It's done, whether it's done, however it's done, it's done, so why don't we move on to the next item? Because we're just wasting time right now.
Well, I, I appreciate the point that Mr. Fraser was making, noted it. I don't know if there's a threshold amount there, that gives the County Administrator the authority to do something below a certain number, and even if there was, if it was applicable to this contract, it could be completely apples and oranges. I think, sounds like Mr. Fraser is not concerned as much about the money, which sounds to be three hundred and sixty dollars.
It's the process.
It's the, it's the procedure, yeah. I hear, I acknowledge his, I acknowledge his concerns.
Mr. Burke brought it to the meeting, the Board reviewed it.
The Board did not review it, but it was made, made in hand.
You had it, you had it in your hand, you made it up.
No, 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 wait, wait, wait. I had to ask you for it, you received it on May fifth, we did not get it.
Right, you got the Board letter finished, and then you can say something.
Okay.
Mr. Burke handed it out, you all glanced at it, you said you wanted more time, the other Board members said, because they knew it was a time constraint, that they gave me the authority to sign it. Mr. Goff heard that, he will confirm that for you, and because it was of the time essence, and it was a savings, it didn't cost the county three hundred and forty-six dollars, it saved us three hundred and forty-six dollars, so it wasn't an increase. Mr. Goff felt that I had the authority to sign it, and I did, because it was holding up the Harris contract.
And I will say, when she was hesitant, and I happened to be there in that conversation, she was hesitant to go forward with the signing, just for the reason you're pointing out, I encouraged her to go ahead and sign it, because I felt like time was of the essence. And so if I made a mistake, I.
Point of order, Mr. Burke handed it to her on May fifth, we did not see it, I had to, I had to send an email and ask for it, we got it later the next week. Unless it was given to you, gentlemen, and not me, I did not give it until later next week in answer to an email. And then, one, one sitting Supervisor, or less than three, have no authority to authorize anybody to do anything outside of an open meeting.
Mr. Goff felt.
Mr. Goff is not always right.
It does, he may not be, but he and I both felt that there was a consensus by the Board that I could sign it that day, and that's why I did it.
And what day was it?
The day that Mr. Burke came in, it was Friday, when we were interviewing the candidates, and we met with him prior to that, he had just.
No, that's the day he brought it in, we didn't see it before then.
I understand that, he didn't have it before.
That was May fifth.
He didn't, well, I don't know the date, it was the day that we interviewed.
I asked, when did you sign it?
Oh, after that.
What day?
I, I don't remember.
Why is this so difficult? We could have had a meeting, we could have had a meeting and discussed this and approved this, and we wouldn't have this discussion right now. That meeting would have been shorter than this conversation.
We tried to set up the meeting, we couldn't get everybody together, it requires notice, we didn't have time, Harris wanted it, they were ordering, they, we did not have time, not to give it the proper notice. Harris was ready to order, Falkier had signed off on it, Culpepper had signed off on it, we were holding the whole project up, and it could end up costing a lot of money by us not signing it. Our consultant said that we should sign it, Culpepper and Falkier agreed to it, and they felt that you were creating a lot of extra money on their part, because it had not been done.
They had, by the way, there was another little twist in there, if I can remember. They had agreed to pay something, rather, rather, rather they overlooked it, or rather they meant to just give it to us, but there was a huge bonus to us, and do you remember what it was, it was some, they had agreed to pay the maintenance of the, of the, our future tower, or something like that, it was, it was a really nice benefit to us as a county, and, and being as they were, you know, chomping at the bits, I mean, eager for us to sign this, to go on with it, I just, I thought it was wise, appropriate, to encourage, she was hesitant to sign.
But we highly like it, you're right, sir.
No, we had authorized her to sign, so there you go.
No, we did not, we did not.
Yeah, we just will. And, so anyway, being as it was saving us money in the contract, and being as it was saving us a lot of future money. Yeah, we just will. And so anyway, being as it was saving us money in the contract and being as it was saving us a lot of future money, it was, it was a good thing to do. And maybe, maybe you don't agree with the process, but.
No, I agree with the process. I don't like the way it was broken. It was violated. The process was not proper.
Yeah, I don't agree. I don't agree with that.
You don't agree with it, but you gave me every indication that you did do it.
Yes. I, I said, I told her, yes, true, we did authorize you to sign it.
No, we didn't.
So go ahead. Don't be afraid to sign it.
We gave you authorization to sign additional changes.
Luckily, these things are being recorded and it's, it's there. It's all there. We all, I distinctly remember us sitting here giving her permission to sign that agreement with Harris.
Exactly. To sign that original agreement. Just with a change order.
There was consensus by the board for me to do so that day.
We just saw it. How could we have a consensus?
If I may, if it.
I mean, actually, you just saw it. We didn't see it.
I think we're just repeating ourselves over and over and over.
Ms. Kaiser's recollection is different than what happened. She saw it on May 5th. This board did not see it until sometime the next week. How could we give a consensus when we hadn't seen it, Mr. Chairman? How could we have done that?
Obviously, while in some one things we did.
But what do you think? If we had not seen it, how could we give consensus?
I won't give you the go against again return.
So, Mr. Chairman, the facts are plain and simple. It was on May 5th, Mr. Burke handed it to Ms. Kaiser. This board did not see it until sometime the next week. How could this board give its consensus to something it had not seen or, or reviewed in any way, shape or form? That is the fact.
Do you have a recess?
Yeah, I'll just recess.
Chairman, I have a board report. In respect to that, we were just discussing that with that and took a look at some emails that I've received. I received one on May from Ms. Kaiser with the amended Harris contract with the changes that show that the net adjustment to the contract actually was to better for the county of $368.47 and I think she pointed that out earlier. If you need to do this, maybe I could just, I would like to make a motion to ratify the approval of this contract and the adoption of it. So that the board can in fact have some type of a, the ratification of what's been done by the county administrator, which in fact looks to be a savings of, to better the county of $368 of change. So I'd like to make a motion to ratify the approval of that adoption of the contract by the board.
I'll second it. Discussion is, discussion. I'm not complaining about the change orders themselves, but I asked two questions on May 11th. One was, when did Mr. Burke first know about the changes? And, and two, how does it affect Rappahannan County? I asked the second question. The first question I asked again on May 17th. Did I get that information? This board did not get that document until on May 9th. I just checked in that email. That's when Ms. Kaiser sent it to us. So there is no way, there is no way that this board could have had a consensus for Ms. Kaiser to sign that agreement, change order on May 5th because we had not seen it. So contrary to what she has stated and what she said Mr. Goff elaborated on, they're mistaken. It did not happen. It could not have happened. And we should follow proper procedures when we are conducting the public's business.
Any other discussion? Have a motion on the table. All of the papers say aye. All ahs. All ahs tonight?
Aye.
Motion, Chair. Put it up to the county judge.
We are, we are, and we have a roll call that is needed on three different sections for the budget. Mr. Parrish, would you like to read that?
Adoption of budget fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. Resolved. Whereas board supervisors in accordance with 15.2-2506 of the Code of Virginia advertising and expected for channel circulation by Rappahannan County to submit the proposed budget for fiscal year 2018 to be seven days prior to a public meeting on said proposed budget in seven additional days. Having passed the act of said budget hearing, summarized forecasted financial statements dated June 1, 2017 are adopted as the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 and ending June 30, 2018 by the following roll call vote by the board supervisors of Rappahannan County, Virginia at the public meeting held on June 5, 2017. That's it.
And the roll call vote, motion, the second, and the roll call vote.
Yeah, motion, second.
Well, I think Chris reading it, it's a motion and I'll second it.
Okay, the roll call vote. Mr. Frager, Mr. Lozinski, Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Parrish?
Aye.
And I am also. As the person.
Okay. Rappahannan County Board Supervisor's Annual Appropriation Fiscal Year ending June 30, 2018. Resolved, under great understanding.
Um, just as, as per the budgets.
Resolved pursuant to the authority granted by 58.1-3001 of the Code of Virginia. The following activities hereby granted and appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 and June 30, 2018. In conformity with the budget adopted in lieu of the above. And then there's a bunch of figures on the board docs.
Which supports the budget that is on board docs dated June 2, 2017. And we need a roll call vote on this gentleman, or a second.
Need a motion, second.
If there's more wording here, though, says the county treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to transfer some from the general fund to the special funds to meet foregoing appropriations. Foregoing resolution of the annual appropriation for fiscal year 2018 is passed by the following roll call vote of board supervisors of Rappahannan County, Virginia at public hearing on 5 June, 2017 after the adoption of the budget for said fiscal year.
And I'll second it again. Motion made in second. The roll call vote. Mr. Frager, Mr. Lozinski.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
And I also.
And I, during property tax levies tax year 2017, 1 January, 2017, is a very windy summer, 2017. Resolved, the proposed tax levies for tax year 2017 having been properly advertised in the newspaper of the general circulation by Rappahannan County in accordance with 58.1-3007 of the Code of Virginia and publicly having been given the opportunity to appear before and be heard by the board supervisors on proposed levies more than seven days after said advertisement, the levies for the tax year 2017 are set at 65 cents per $100 of assessed value of real estate and $4.25 per $100 of assessed value of tangible personal property as described below. There is hereby made an additional levy within the countywide fire and rescue district created by a statute 22-8 of the Rappahannan County Code of 5 cents per $100 of assessed value of real estate and 20 cents per $100 of assessed value of tangible personal property as described below. The funds generated by this additional levy shall be exclusively for the fire services fund provided for by paragraph 27-23.1 of the Code of Virginia. Tangible personal property classified for valuation purposes in 58.1-3503A of the Code of Virginia, paragraphs 3 through 13, listed, shall be subject to taxation at the tangible personal property rate set in the annual levy. Pursuant to 58.1-3008 of the Code of Virginia, the items set forth in paragraphs 1, 2, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 of 58.1-3503A of the Code of Virginia shall be exempt from taxation to the extent provided by 58.1-3504 and 58.1-3505. Or if not made exempt by these sections, shall have a tax rate of zero. In accordance with Article 10, 151-27, if, second, second quarter, I think, I said, of the Rappahannan County Code, there is hereby imposed a motor vehicle license tax of $25 per non-exempt vehicle. For the purpose of determining what property is subject to the annual levy, what property is exempt, what property has a rate of zero, references to the Code of Virginia refer to the provisions that exist, existed on 1 July, 2016. One motor vehicle owner or leased by a member or auxiliary member of the volunteer fire and rescue squad shall be defeated as provided by 22-9 of the Rappahannan County Code. The foregoing resolution of that new taxes for the tax year began 1 January, 2017 and then occurred 1 December, 2017 was passed by the following roll call vote of board supervisors of Rappahannan County, Virginia at a public meeting on 5 June, 2017 after the adoption of the fiscal year 2018 budget. The eligibility, license tax, those receipts, 0.05, and telephone taxes, 2 cents.
So, second, everyone also.
Motion made in second. Would you roll call vote? Mr. Frager?
Aye.
Mr. Lozinski?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Parrish?
Aye.
And I am also.
I have two policies to review.
Oh, yeah. These are both part of the.
The first one is budget transfer, budget lines. Number 305 is a draft. This is to provide a comprehensive and uniform process for budgeting line items. It talks about the procedure, which is to complete the form. It talks about capital expense being $1,000 with a lifespan of one year. And this would be a requirement to fill out when there is money that is needed between the departments, for the department budgets. Uh, we need, any changes that anyone has, if they would like us to know, and if there are no changes, then we need a motion to approve. As is.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve this. It's going to clean up our bookkeeping a little bit more. Think it's more in line with standard county procedures. I think it's a good thing.
I'll second.
The motion made in second.
How does this, what, what problem is this solved?
This would prevent someone moving money between departments to have a budget line that would be larger so that they could make larger purchases or would just give, it would just give the board authorization before, required before they would make purchases of $1,000 or more or to transfer the funds. Right now, people can transfer within their budget. So in other words, if I have the money in the budget in that department budget, I can transfer the money with them as long as I don't go over the department budget. But if you have more than one budget, then as the building department does, or as the emergency management did, then it doesn't allow you to move monies between the two.
Well, I have, it sounds good, but I mean, this is a kind of oversight I've been asking for years to deal with the school and we don't do that. We're going to adopt that as a mandatory approval. We did it once. We did it once and it should work if we continue to do it. And I don't know why we want to do it here with the top of $1,000 and over there. Soon as I can, you know, pretending why this town is foolish. If we're going to do it here, why wouldn't we do it throughout the county budget? Just a dollar.
Hold on, a motion. Second.
Mr. Parrish made the second.
All those voters say aye?
Aye.
Motion, Parrish, made second.
The next one is the capital outlay and asset policy number 306. This is to provide a comprehensive and uniform process for capital outlay and to set forth the regulations and procedures governing the control and reporting of capital and controlled assets. Right now, we do not track any of this. So this would provide each department to be responsible for tracking the assets, what the cost is. It would help with insurance replacement if we needed that for theft. And then also to prevent purchases for which would require the board to approve about the $1,000 mark.
I have a question with the disposition of assets. We don't have a policy, I mean, we don't, we have so much stuff that a county in its bulk doesn't exist. I mean, we don't really have a disposition of assets.
But we need to. So this is the.
I know, but this doesn't address it. It just says that the disposal shall be recorded promptly, but how, and we're, there's only two ways that we can legitimately dispose of something. That's through the landfill or a public auction. And we've not done that.
And we need to, and we need to establish a policy for that. So that would be on the list of things to do.
But I, I think it ought to be, on the heels of this, it ought to be with this. Because if we, if we adopt this now, there's, it's peaceful. So shall we postpone this? Actually, I don't. Well, I would think it shouldn't take long to fix the other. I mean, because it's public property. We can only dispose of it a certain way, but we have to say what that is here. That's how we want to do it, I guess. But we have to have a method of doing it. Right now, there's no real, you know, person in charge of that or, or, or department or whatever. It just, you know, the sheriff's cruisers get turned over to the school. I don't know what that process. I don't know what that process is, and then they get sold by the school. But there's, there's no list of what's happened to all the computers that this county has purchased over the years. There's no. There's just simply no record of it.
I don't disagree with you, but it's going to take the department's time. We're going to have to order tags, so this is going to take a while to implement. I agree, we need both, but I think we can go ahead and implement this and get people started on the process, and then we can follow up with the disposition policy. It needs to be based on Virginia code, so it's going to take some time to go through.
Well, the code section that deals with disposition of property is not as large as this thing is, but we just have to have a way to do it. And that's what I'm saying, is we haven't been doing it.
Well, should we ask Ms. Kaisner to drive from up to the... July meeting?
I have, yeah, I mean, how are we going to dispose of the material to equip? We mentioned it here, but we have nothing in place, so let's overlook that.
Yeah. Is the IT equipment concerned with assessment of the data, so...
Well, it seems to me that we either adopt this and do it later, or table it and incorporate the code for how to properly dispose of it, which I guess is either surplus traded in, sold, stolen, or destroyed. If there was a code that we should have attached to this, it gives us further direction as to what to do when we dispose of something, and I suppose we can wait until the third day is sworn. Unless, Ms. Kaisner, you think you'd need this, and now perfectly Indiana good here, if you need something that's good now, start with, and then we can invent it later.
I can, I can do the both together this time.
I'm sorry, you can do both together.
I can, I don't need something approved today or to create the next one. I can put them together for second.
And just as a note, with all the discussion about the possibility of adding a consent agenda, these two policies are something that would be discussed by a policy committee in advance, that would then just kind of brief the boards, or we would have to discuss these the first time, you know, in the open. Same with the accounts table, that's usually handled by a finance committee, other accounts then.
Ms. Navy?
So I'll make a motion that we postpone this, adopting this procedure here. I'll second it.
Motion made in second. All votes in favor say aye. All votes in hand. Motion, Parrish. Does that finish? Take us up to broadband committee update.
Very quickly, Mr. Chairman, the broadband committee did meet on May 15th. The focus of that meeting was to discuss a public awareness campaign for the survey that needs to go out. The survey is generated, is a survey that's generated by the Center for Innovative Technology. We have a chance to tweak it, make it Rapid Hand specific, but they highly recommend that we conduct a public awareness campaign so that the survey does go out, that we get a good response. The committee enlisted the help of Jane Whitfield, who was here earlier, to help us with that public awareness campaign. She's not joining the committee, she's kind of a special projects person, and we'll discuss that public awareness campaign at the next meeting of the broadband committee, which is on a week from today, Monday, June 12th. We've confirmed that that's going to be at the library, but it is going to be at 7:30. We continue to move forward. Don't they have any questions from the board?
Do you have a topic for the next meeting?
It's going to be to discuss this public awareness campaign. We're going to develop it over the summer so that we can roll it out when school starts again, and then follow shortly thereafter the broadband survey, which will probably be in late September, early October.
Well, looks like you got to make them too, ma'am.
Well, Mr. Fraser and I met with some members of the building task force, Mr. Alan Cox, Mr. Casey Till, and Ricky Jenkins. They have since had an opportunity to tour and complete the initial survey of all eleven buildings on Gay Street, as well as the visitor's center, kind of waiting for the report on that. They enlisted some more members for the building task force, specifically Mr. David Edwards, who was the regional director through the Virginia Division of Historic Resources, and Mr. Hugh Miller, who's a former director of this Division of Historic Resources, an expert on historic building rehabilitation, Jim Racer, who's a local contractor, and Twitch Zindel, another local contractor, and a member of the Washington Town Architecture Review Board. They're trying to set a date between July 4th and 14th, where they could spend, this group could spend a full day touring the buildings and developing the outlines of regulations for the supervisors, I think, which after that point we use to develop whatever RFP that we want to pull together to go out to bid for a building engineer to look at these buildings. So I think we have a pretty good, pretty good start on this building task force to take a look at our buildings, all eleven, plus the visitor's center here on Gay Street, to talk about where, how much money we might need to invest in these buildings, and what the ultimate cost in the county might be, and how to pay for it, and what we do to work. But if there are any immediate repairs that need to be done, Sheriff's, Sheriff's, we probably need to get the task force back together again and talk about that, unless you're aware of any projects that the consent is going to be ongoing for maintenance.
We have a $4,000 project for which we're paying half of that between now and the end of the year to run fire between the courthouse and circuit clerk's office, and our cost on that will be about $2,500. They're checking into the size of the pipe, and if they can increase it, so we haven't gotten that cost back yet, but we're hoping that we'll have that available and ready. And then the clerk, circuit clerk, is installing a alarm system that needs to be updated, I think, you and Mr. Fraser were there, and Mr. Parrish, so that would be another $4,200. So those two projects are anticipated to come in between now and the end of June, and we left money in the budget to cover that, hence the difference between the $90,000 and the $70,000.
That's a, that's a report from the task, Building Task Force, Mr. Chairman, unless the board members have any questions.
Any questions? All right, next time, the tower location.
Okay, I'm not really sure how urgent this pager tower is. Okay. Input on that, and it seemed to be fairly urgent, and known on me that possible, being as cumbersome to deal with landowners, that possible location could be the sewer, water sewer property in Sperryville, that I actually initially thought it was owned by the county, but it's not, it's owned by their own entity. It was donated by a senior grandfather of the landlord, and there is no restriction for cell towers on it. And I was also hoping it would be a good enough location where we can beef up the tower enough, tunnel off for cell service and broadband, but it seems to be that it's not quite, you know, high enough, we could go up to 199 feet without a light. After that, if we want on it, where it would be high enough to do any good, we'd have to have a light on it, and I'm not sure what people would think of that. So they're only using an acre out of the five acres there, I guess the really only true benefit, other than the fact that it would satisfy the requirements for the pager system that we're required to implement. And I actually, what I'm actually going to throw in here, that up here in the county that's part of disagreement, Ms. Kaisner signed, that they have agreed to maintain our, our site even though it's on our county account, so I didn't, you know, I think it's real good to go ahead and let them do that. But anyway, I don't, it seems to me that there's another site that's come forward. It is owned by a private individual, so that could create a bunch of delay in negotiation, but if it's a better location, that's fine, because it would be nice to not only fulfill our requirement for a pager system, but also to provide cell service in that part of the county, and hopefully some broadband in that part of the county. So I do believe, Mr. Bank, do you have somebody that's come forward, as a private?
Well, a number of people from the Sperryville Rescue and Sperryville Fire have talked to the gentleman, and he's interested in going forward. He had some questions about what it would look like, and I think we need to go forward and talk to him, and set up an opportunity for the engineers to come out and actually verify that the site would work for the paging system, so...
Can you give us approximate location?
It's off Winter Grove.
Okay. That's very, that's been verified as a good location by taking a view of it.
Right. This broadband guy, was it Timon Broadband? Went up and looked, and it worked for his broadband, and Mr. Burke said that it was probably a better location than both the Sperryville Volunteer Fire, which are a little bit hesitant of having it there, and also the sewer plant. So the resolution, I think we see it somewhere. Ms. Kaisner, we have authority to go forward and have this site also checked out, draw up the appropriate legal framework, whether how we lease the property, and our contract with them, plus the engineer report, or study to determine that it would actually benefit the, fulfill the needs that we need.
You think this is a go, because I just got an email back from the surveyor for the Turkey project, and he said he hasn't had a chance to look at it yet. We didn't authorize him to go ahead with it.
You know, at this point, I don't think, I don't think we need to go ahead with it.
With Turkey?
With Turkey.
I'll have to send him an email. We could look at, I mean, I'm just throwing this out, we could look at going higher there at the Water and Sewer Authority. I mean, the advantage there is we don't have to deal with the landowner. The advantage there is if there's any future income from cell, from cell service companies and broadband, that the, I'm not sure who would get it, the county or the Water and Sewer Authority, or both of us, but anyway, their costs are our costs anyway, if we have to expand that, the county's going to have to pay for that. So, I mean, we did have the dual advantage of keeping the income and not, and not having to negotiate with the private landowner and all of their immediate neighbors.
Right.
And, and the only way it would probably work is that if you want it higher, and in which case we have to put a blinking light up there, that's the only real downfall.
Well, you have a fall zone consideration too, though, don't you? Because I mean, Water and Sewer sites...
It's a five acre parcel, and they have, and so we've got four acres to have a fall zone, so I don't think that's a problem.
The Water and Sewer, it would have to go through the planning and also, so, you know, I don't know which location could get some of these resistance and do the most good.
We can waive all the requirements and zoning ordinance except for a public hearing.
Except for what?
Except for a public hearing, and we can waive the type of restriction, we can waive freefall if needed to. We can't, we can't waive...
Public hearing.
I don't like the idea of waiving freefall if there's houses already there.
Right.
Obviously, if somebody built in the shadow of a tower, then they bear some responsibility. Yeah, I mean, we could actually post both sites simultaneously, see how the public feels about it, see what the financial benefits or burdens will be, and compare, compare them side by side to each other.
Well, isn't there any, isn't there something here on board docs about bringing an engineer on board to help us assess what the best site may potentially be? Isn't that, is that part of what we're supposed to be discussing today?
I'm just...
Mr. Becker?
If they have, if we have multiple sites, whether it's Water and Sewer, or whether it's the site that we discussed today, or perhaps even Turkey, Turkey out, I don't know, or at least the first two, you know, if we can get some professional help to take a look at these, give us some recommendation, although time is in the essence, I guess.
Well, I think we have the federal, can they help us with this, the consulting engineers? And, you know, broadband may be a far reach for, for something like this, but at least the citizens could be provided with cell service, and that's great.
Well, the primary function is this, increase the public safety.
The page, you don't know that, there's no doubt that that would satisfy that requirement, you know, itself. I believe it, if I'm not correct.
So are you talking tower or monopole?
Well, my idea was, I mean, I like monopoles because they're not very visible, but if we are going to, if we're going to take an effort to provide cell service to the, to that part of the county, then we may have to beef up the tower. So I don't really know, I can't answer that question at this point without some, you know, engineering input, but if we're going to go ahead and, I'm just going to throw it out, let's just say the monopole would cost us, I'm just going to say $70,000, but if we could spend another $30,000 to $40,000 and have something strong enough to support cell service and possibly broadband, I think, even though I've publicly, you know, posted that I can't extend money on that, I think that would be, I would track that, and that would probably be a good idea. It would be money well spent, especially given the fact that the income would come back to the county through the Water and Sewer Authority.
So the property on, off of Woodard Road, I'm not sure exactly what the elevation is, but it's quite a bit higher.
600.
1200.
1200.
Yeah, you would need a monopole 90.
Just get over the tree canopy. Just get over the tree canopy. And I'm not sure that property would be viable for a tower.
Right. Well, I think Chris was referring to a tower for the Water and Sewer location because of its low altitude, I'll say, and you need to go higher just to create the coverage you need.
But I think that property's below 600.
Probably.
It's around 612, I think, with the GPS.
The, when they went up and looked at it, they had good 4G coverage from Sprint. So that indicated that at least you could have, I don't know if it's called feedback or what you need for the fire and rescue to carry the signal from someplace to there.
That would link the two.
So I would suggest we look at the higher side first, determine if that will work. If that doesn't, we merely fall back up to maybe the sewer plant.
And then, and then implement the negotiation process. I mean, he's not going to do it for nothing.
Right, well, that would be part of it. I think that's in the resolution that's before us to give Debbie the power to go forward. So it's here to find.
You want to read it just because?
Sure. A resolution for the Board of Supervisors, the broadband can't be whereas the Board finds it, finds that it's necessary and in the interest of public safety and welfare that the emergency paging communication and other communication be installed in this county and that proper equipment, structure and site be made available. For this purpose, we now hereby resolve that the county administrator is directed to hire an engineer service to study and design all such needed facilities and structures. And the county administrator is directed to immediately begin to negotiate with public or private landowners for the lease or purchase of a suitable site where a structure, facilities and equipment needed. Once a suitable site is found, the county administrator will notify this board and the chairman may then call a special meeting to consider further actions on this topic. I just can put a roll call approach. I think there's no other discussion. Make the motion.
I thought we had a tower task force, you mean, the two supervisors were out of it?
No, but would it be still in it?
What would we, what would we do then? And to be frank with you, I didn't know that you guys were going up there. But that's fine. It is not, now, if the county administrator does all this negotiation, where would we be in that process?
I think, I think-
I think we need to be involved in it.
Well, I asked the administrator to keep us informed. And if, you know, to tell you the truth, if it's the Spiritville Fire and Rescue that felt they saw that we needed to move on this.
That's fine. I have no problem with moving on with things. What I'm saying that I think that we need to still stay in the loop.
How about we add language to this resolution where it says, says here to resolve that the county administrators directed to hire engineering services to study and design all such needed facilities and structures. And the county administrator, you know, with consultation with the tower task force is directly directed to immediately begin to negotiate with public and private landowners. And other words, and the county administrator with-
With the two supervisors?
Yeah, well, with task force, you know, with, in consultation with the tower task force.
Yeah, I just feel that we need to stay involved. I mean, I hate to keep beating the dead horse, but the horse keeps naming, so it's not dead. I think, I think we need to stay involved because I have so much trouble getting information. I'd just like to be-
We had reference to the task force and maybe that's what I did.
I think so.
Do the supervisors. Lead in the road.
I think so. We need to stay more involved when we have to.
So with the added worded words, I'll make the motion. And we adopt this resolution?
I would second it.
Motion made and seconded. All those favor say aye.
That's our roll call.
Mr. Fraser? Mr. Lozinski?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm going to say aye, but can I write on some changes on that? It's an official document. I'm going to let Johnson come up with the word.
I'm aye. I'm going to vote aye.
Fire rescue, right?
No, I don't have much more of an update than last month, except that the chiefs have a version, they're now calling version eight A, or Apple eight A. And it is now in the hands of the fire and rescue chiefs. And they're taking it back to their individual companies for review, and we're hoping that any changes from those companies will be marked up and, of course, if there are any changes. And then they'll go back to the association and executive committee before they have a final vote on that, they'll present it back to the board of supervisors. I don't know exactly what all the changes are. Only one they've been trying to keep up with is on the county side, the county's obligations. I think there are some of the companies had a few questions about some of the other language and their obligation to the companies, their obligation of the association. So hopefully we'll have it sometime in July. I don't know if it'll be for the July board meeting. But hopefully we can circulate a copy of it to all of them. Thank you.
No.
We have a resolution on board docs to hire the zoning administrator slash deputy county administrator. The resolution has been prepared with my candidate selection, not yours. So we had two choices, as you recall. So I would like to vote, I would like you to vote today on a candidate for that position so that we can move forward. If salary is $60,000 as proposed, that's less than $5,000 per month. And I have that money in my budget that I can move it within my budget line to take care of those expenses between now and the end of June. And that position is budgeted for July 2017 forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to you for discussion and a potential break.
I thought this was one of the items that we were going to discuss at that meeting that we didn't have. So the board has had no discussion of this until today. And we have to have a resolution to turn this again. Well, we interviewed this guy and he seemed to be very capable. And we actually, we need somebody to fill that position as soon as possible. So I personally think, I personally think he was just a candidate for the job. And I'll make a motion to go ahead and hire him. But we haven't had any discussion. Well, if we get a second, we'll have a discussion. It seems like this decision's already been made. Has it? In my opinion, I prefer this person over the other. I'm saying we were supposed to have this particular discussion at another meeting and we didn't have that meeting. So I'm asking, by the appearance of this here and your perspective, to put it in a motion immediately, has this decision already been made? That's what I'm trying to find out.
No.
No, of course not. We're going to vote on it and we're going to discuss it. We ought to discuss it before we vote on it. I mean, you want to make a motion, have a second, and then vote on this resolution, but we've never discussed actually hiring this individual. That's what I'm trying to determine is, was this decision already made somewhere outside of a public meeting? Because I've had no information. Of course not. I'm just, I mean, you asked me to provide a decision and I'll just tell you, it's in my personal opinion that he's the best candidate. So that's the reason I made the motion to hire him.
Well, I think also it's the recommendation of the county administrator. When we choose to accept the recommendation, we're not as, our business. We did have the opportunity to interview all the candidates. So it's been a very participative process. This is the recommendation of the county administrator. Motion here, a member who feels that this is the best candidate for the job. I'll second that because I do also agree at this table that this individual is probably the best qualified and the best fit, and the one that I would recommend to hire. So I don't have a problem seconding the motion. In fact, I do it with enthusiasm.
I'm not saying he's not qualified. I'm just saying that this has all the appearance of having already been decided. I mean, here's a resolution with a gentleman's name and salary and everything, as if it's already been decided.
It has not been decided. It's, would normally be my position to hire that person.
This is the same way that the county attorney position was filled, and that gentleman billed us for an hour's work, six hours before he was hired, six and a half hours. So you know how things just kind of keep looking kind of strange? No, I'm not suspicious. I'm just, I can connect the dots, Mr. Parrish. I can connect dots, and I'm just wondering if this was already decided somewhere? Because we were supposed to discuss this. And didn't. The truth of the matter is, county administrator has the authority to hire this person, either or without, or- This board would have to pay for that authority. This is not a county executive. I don't think so. Well, under what statute do you find that authority? I don't know what statute it is, but I actually asked the county attorney about that. What statute did he have?
It's 1541, 1541.
Thank you. 1541?
Yeah, title, 15.2, and it's 1541. Every chief administrator may appoint, which he would be.
May.
In other words, this is, you said, what statute gives her that authority?
Now, may, it says may.
Well, you know, you can argue-
Somebody asks, the board would have to give her that authority, and then she may do it.
I don't think it's, no, it doesn't say that. So it's, it's statute said, here, you're going to have a county administrator, the county administrator can't tie her left shoe, okay? May tie her left shoe. She didn't have to come to the board and say, can I tie my left shoe?
That's not exactly analogous to what we're doing, so.
Well, it says may do something. She may do it.
She can do it.
That's a point.
She's presenting this to us as a matter of courtesy. I believe, I don't know, this is what appears to me. No, if this board has to appropriate the money for it, she doesn't do that, or whoever's in that position, they, if they don't have the authorities to appropriate, it's not as we do.
Well, we did that when we approved budget, we got them.
If you're hiring now, then she's got to have $60,000 in there. She's got to have that $5,000 or $3,000, unless she says she's got it, then it has to be re-appropriated, I would think. I'm just saying, it looks kind of like the other deal, where it looks like this decision was already made, and all we're doing is just, you know, trying to make it look like it.
Well, Ron, do you have any other suggestion than the other person that you did?
Well, I don't think, I thought one of the other candidates was equally qualified, but I'm just saying, I'm not opposed to this, except for the procedure. It looks like it's a done deal, and it was done without me sitting at a meeting where it was discussed. And I sent you all an email about this very same thing back on the 17th. I said, I'm opposed to what you were doing. We needed to have that meeting and discuss these things. It didn't happen.
Well, this is a motion. I'm sorry? Right?
I'm going to second.
This is a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Fraser?
I've had to qualify my vote. I'm against the process, but I will vote to hire the individual.
Mr. Lozinski?
Aye.
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 And I also. Okay. See this? VML.
I don't know why, but I'll give you a brief synopsis. We currently have VML insurance and have had them for a number of years. Because of the change in the FOIA lawsuit, or because of the change in the FOIA law and the lawsuit that we had, we asked VML if they would cover the board of supervisors, and they said no. So for that reason, we went looking for the other insurance pool to see if it's what they would cover. When Bay Corp came back, they said, yes, we do cover that. We haven't, but we have some need for it, so we are going to cover it. So with that, we did a side-by-side comparison between the two insurance pools. Bay Corp came back with a premium that was $30,000 less than what we've been paying to VML. VML lowered it because they are now in competition with Bay Corp. VML usually insures city and towns in most counties. Bay Corp normally insures most counties, but again, they can do both, and they do do both, but that's their area of specialty. My concern with changing this, because everything really came in pretty equal. The premium came back at 72,000, so I changed for both of them. My concern with this was what this would mean to the sheriff's department, because they're the ones that have the majority of claims. They have most of the workers' comp claims, and then they're the ones that, you know, have deer that hit the car and, you know, have car claims. So it would mean having a new vendor come in and have new reporting, setting up the department. When I talked to Bay Corp about, Corp about that, they assured me that they would come in and take that transition over and make it seamless, which would be for the county administrator's office and for the sheriff's office. So the only other thing I will note too is that Bay Corp does have some additional coverages for the constitutional officers. It's added a little bit additional money, but I think, you know, as we know, there's been a lawsuit there too, and that would give them additional coverage. So that was the only thing from a coverage perspective that I really saw that was different. So I think we can go either way. I think it's up to you gentlemen as to decide which one that you want. I was going to recommend VML as of Friday because of the change in the vendor system and the claims, but I did talk to, I wasn't able to talk to the sheriff. I was able to talk to the major, and he's willing. talk to the major, and he's willing to work if you all decide to go with Bay Corp. I haven't been able to talk to the sheriff, she doesn't know all the particulars about this, so I really don't know her feelings, but I decided to consider both of them after Bay Corp said that they would come in and take over that transition process for us. So, I will leave those in your hands.
So, you're saying they vote for a similar, but we've been dealing with Bay Corp?
We've been dealing with VML for a lot of years.
Yeah, and then which one was gonna help with the constitutional?
Bay Corp, and they're the ones that came in at seventy-two thousand dollars, and really, VML.
We've been with VML since eighty-nine, I think.
The school board is with Bay Corp, and Bay Corp actually, when the school board was sued over FOIA issue, Bay Corp stepped up and provided counsel, which now VML says that they will do. Having been on the school board during that evolution, I can tell you that Bay Corp thing is pretty seamless. They recommended an attorney familiar with school board law and the FOIA law, who was down in Harrisonburg, I believe. So, I mean, having gone through that process, I can tell you that Bay Corp, it was a pretty positive, pretty positive experience. They have a deductible, but as anybody would, but beyond that, the coverage was there.
The references that I checked stated that VML does a great job, and VML does a good job with their training programs, but Bay Corp is probably more client-friendly, and as you said, you know, work to try to cover more for their clients if it's something that's not typically covered. They're not an insurance company, they're an insurance pool, both of them are. So, we're paying into a pool, so we are really part of them, so to say, so they do try to work with the clients, so...
I just kinda find it interesting that VML doesn't, doesn't come to, didn't come to the table with, you know, discount price and with an additional service, you know, until we went on shopping.
That goes out of the time.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's the way it works, I guess.
I don't care.
I don't care. I get that's a problem.
You mentioned the change in FOIA law?
To be able to sue individuals, not just as a board, which is what happened, you hadn't been able to do that previously.
So, when do we need to make this decision?
We should start the policy July first.
Well, now, I know that Peter and Art researches to quite a bit, but what do they, what do they, how are they making it?
They both came back so similar that I don't think they really had one hidden in there or the other.
It's an annual policy?
It's an annual policy.
So, you have a good idea, Mr. State, of who you're with?
Well, VML used to have the largest, I guess the largest pool of assets, but I don't know if that's a proper way to say that, the insurance company, but I don't know anymore. I mean, they started it first, that's why we went with them. I wasn't on the board, I just remember that happening.
Right.
Everybody was trying to find a way to bring their insurance costs down, so VML stepped up and started the insurance pool then. Bay Corp said, well, we can do a pool, and they were like, the new guys on the block, they didn't have as much money, there was good coverage. But if they're there now, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, so we've been with VML, and then Bay Corp, they were offering us a lot, seventy-two thousand dollars less, and VML decided they would match that, right? And then which one helps out the constitution?
Bay Corp.
So, is that enough reason to switch?
Does that gonna cost us extra for the constitution?
It will, it will cost us extra.
Is this something they wanna participate in?
I haven't talked to them, but I would imagine that they would, they have a, an insurance pool, but this would give them additional coverage.
Through their association?
They have it through the association, this would give them additional.
It's called selective risk, it's, it's sort of a mutual fund, too, I think, as best I understand this situation.
Bay Corp is?
No.
No, not for you, which is juvenile life.
Oh, I see, right, right.
I'm sorry. Sorry to butt into the selective risk insurance.
The additional premium for that is like five thousand dollars or less, so it's really nominal.
For a constitutional officer or for all of them?
For total.
Including the sheriff?
As far as I know, yeah. Constitutional officer.
We have a constitutional officer in the room, and we, so, okay, Ms. Nick, do you have any opinion on this?
The more coverage we have, the better, I mean, that would be my opinion.
You're not helping.
Sorry. Well, it looks like Bay Corp goes to two billion for each act, an annual membership by, VML only goes to a billion, that's the second paragraph down, and then it events. At the same time, when you get down to cyber coverage, VML only goes to, goes to a million, and Bay Corp goes to a half million for occurrence, so... Roll the phones, gentlemen. Anyone care to make a motion?
We're gonna flip a coin, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I could...
I wouldn't mind talking to the sheriff about it, because it's, it's really the one that's going to impact, so, so, you wanna postpone it till tonight, and let me talk to her.
Should write that, maybe a little flip a coin?
Yeah.
The next item is a Department of Transportation request. It's regarding a nineteen-twenty bridge deck that is in poor condition. They have researched it and stated that it's not historic and doesn't qualify for any historic funding, and they're asking us if we have any reason to disagree with that. I checked with Mr. McCarthy, he's not aware of anything specific regarding this bridge. I couldn't find anything in the files, so I wanted to present it to you and see if you had any further knowledge, and if I had your permission to sign off on the recommendation for them to move forward.
This is pretty long time, too. Where's all the pictures of it? Oh, I don't know, it's, yeah, right below the, yeah, that's fine.
Where's the logo?
It's right below the pictures, you know, on that little, little side of the option.
It ties the two of them together?
It ties, uh...
It's closer, yeah.
It's the smaller one, yeah.
I thought it was open again, I thought it was just...
They're working on it, I think.
Yeah, they're hardworking.
Chose up in the weekly report.
They were working on it.
So, that's fine, they just, they got one of them written on there.
The next item is the...
I'm sorry, our iPads are going black. That's okay, but mine wasn't that, not today, it was, it was having me a bunch.
I thought it was just me.
No, it's a conspiracy.
It's a conspiracy.
Thanks to all of us.
The next item is scheduling the next town hall meeting, which is due to be in the Piedmont District. I've talked to Mr. Bennet about it, and we thought about having it in this district, but we also, we also thought about having it at the Parks and Rec. That will allow parents to bring out their children and let them play, they may not always have an opportunity, you know, to have a babysitter, so this will allow the kids to play and be able to talk to the supervisors. So, if you, if you don't wanna do it at the park, you're not interested, we can do it at the Sperryville Fire Hall, they're willing to accommodate us, so, Mr. Bennet, this is in your district.
I think the parks are great, I think.
Yeah, we can do a cop knock.
Monster hunting?
So, I put a proposed date on there, June the nineteenth, which is on Monday at six P.M. Is that...
That works for me.
I think that works for me also.
Yesterday, nineteen, the Monday?
June the nineteenth.
Holiday, two weeks from today.
Do we wanna make it a little bit later in the summer?
Oh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it for me, but, but, yeah, but if this works for everybody themselves, I personally, my personal opinion is that the park's not gonna be conducive to a concentrated, you know, discussion, but it'd be a nice experiment.
Okay, moving forward with the date. The next item is the county administrator update, and I have an update on the lease. Our landlord has a family illness and has really not been able to concentrate on our lease, so I received an email, which I forwarded to you, that says that we have an extension for the next thirty days, so I'll be back in touch with him again toward the middle of the month and see if he has an update for us. I know that he is looking at the cost he would build out in the room at the bottom, so hopefully we'll have something in the next week or two, and I'll be impressed. Is she dead?
Yeah, that's a definite family.
Oh, I didn't know.
His wife, his wife's father died, and two weeks later, his mother died.
I didn't realize she'd passed away, it just put her in custody.
So, where does the thirty-day extension put us?
The end of June.
It'll probably extend it again.
Yeah.
Also, not listed on here, I just wanted to thank Dave Yell and John Toll for helping with our new P.A. system. They helped us order it and helped us install it this morning, so...
It's off.
Why is it off?
Maybe timed out.
Maybe, yeah. That's my thing.
And they left.
And they left, so we'll have to work on it. So, I'd like to thank them for helping us, they've been really instrumental in doing so.
They were trying to give us a message.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's plugged in. We talked about the fiber, that was the other thing that I wanted to mention to you, and I think that's all that I have at this point. A reminder that June twenty-ninth is our meeting for the end of the year to review final invoices.
What time does that leave?
I haven't really set it, I think I put it at ten o'clock, but it's open for discussion.
They've given us enough time to approve the checks and for them to be cleared? That was always consideration.
Okay, there's the V. monthly report, there's the building permanent report, there's the Rattanik electric with the potential increase notification, and that takes us down to the last item, which is a potential closed session, employee performance and/or performance review discussion.
Gentlemen, I ask for that again, we asked a year ago, we asked a month ago, April, and I took delivery with Will, Mr. Chairman, and Kevin. I borrowed this from Ms. Nick, it says lawful employment practices, that she attended a training seminar for constitutional officers conducted, I guess, on behalf of the compt board, and the constitutional officers have to follow procedures and practices, I think that this board needs to do something very similar. And I didn't take a delivery to make any copies, but I can do that before I give it back to her, I hope. But anyway, I think we need to have proper procedures in place, we need to have some sort of a calendar for all of our employees. Right now, we have a problem with no record keeping in time. We have a problem with, we don't have any type of employee review, and that's what you have to do, you have to have some sort of periodic review, saying, is that a boy, or is that a girl, or...
There's no work.
You're not doing your job, you know, and, and I think that, that on behalf of the citizens, the taxpayers, we've got to do this, we've got to document, we've got to document things, everything. Basically, with a little bit of knowledge I do have about going into court, if it's not documented, it wouldn't happen. That's the way it is, are they, sometimes they, they try to make great strides to help somebody, and they'll ask you, did you document that, and you say, no, you don't have a case. And again, on behalf of the citizens, I think we need to do that. I don't, I don't think we, that we need to do it, we absolutely have to do it, we don't have record keeping, I don't know how long that's not been going on, but it's been going on too long. So, that's, I think we need to establish a process where we will have periodic reviews, and if we have to go into exactly a session to have them, then so be it, but we have to have them. Either that or we're gonna constantly be talking about problems out in the open, because they are becoming, problems are becoming known, they need to be discussed, except for this board, how we're gonna handle them.
I agree, I think that we do need to have those in place. I think there's some questions that the board probably needs to answer before we really put those in place. We give an annual review, if you give an annual review, sometimes there's an expectation of employees to give an increase, so if we're going to have an increase, is that increase based on performance, or is it a cost of living? Do you want to take that two percent and break it out and make it one percent employee performance, and one percent COLA, or do you want more of a COLA? So, I think there's a lot of things that the board needs to think about.
Well, increases in pay, I mean, that has to be basically driven by the economy.
That's correct, but then when you start looking at doing performance, you have to set a clear expectation. When you, when you review employees, there is often an expectation that an increase comes with them.
I understand that.
Or you need to reward them, so I think the board needs to have a...
Well, no, employees are getting rewarded if they agree to do a certain job and you're doing that, and that's part of the reward, they still have a job. I mean, if the local economy is such that nobody's getting a raise, in fact, some people may be spending more money to live than they were for two years' work, and I don't think it's fair to, to charge the taxpayers with an increase of living for employees, I mean, everybody's in the same boat.
I hear you, and I don't disagree with you at all, I just know that there are counties and companies that do...
But this county's small enough that everybody understands that some of the same people that work for the county are, you know, one of the spouse of somebody that's self-employed, so they understand.
Again, it's just a philosophy, and I think that's, excuse me, something I think the board has to think about and decide how you want to deal with that.
Well, once again, going back to the school board example, I mean, there was actually, there were actually set performance review documents. there were actually set performance review documents, templates that were set up, teachers, administrators, principals, superintendents, and it all came through the Virginia School Board Association. It was a standard, almost a standardized thing throughout the commonwealth. I wonder if there's just something like that that Bay Corp has? I mean, I would think...
They probably borrowed something.
Yeah, I mean, plagiarism is the greatest form of flattery, but there may be something already out there that's really standard.
Yeah, well, it does, there's no copyright on it.
Yeah, there just may be, you know, I kind of think maybe county administrators have come up with some type of standardized performance document. And then the question becomes, well, who are we, you know, because we don't observe these employees every day. That's my only concern.
Well, this board would only, I guess Ms. Kaiser would have to have certain ones to be, and the board won't have. Maybe not from today, we only have like three direct reports. We have the building official slash E911 slash what's the coordinate, and the county administrator, and the county attorney. There's really only three direct reports. Outside that, we wouldn't necessarily have reviews. She might have to conduct some, but to follow on her point with the school board, you'd have to conduct those reviews regardless of whether you have money to give them a raise.
No, that's, that's absolutely correct.
So, I mean, yeah. Everybody can review on the job that they were doing, and unfortunately, sometimes we can't give a raise.
I mean, this... Well, I'm assuming, does Deputy County Administrator have a contract?
Yes, probably.
Okay. Those contracts have termination dates. Those are, you know, those are annual times around year before termination. It's a good time for performance review. So, anyway, I think the place to leave this discussion is to find out if there's anything that our, you know, Joint Counties might do. About to put the former Commonwealth Attorney on the spot here. Did you remember Page County had anything along those lines? Is it a county administration?
I'll tell you what, it is exactly, we didn't have for a long, long time. And guess what? Something happened. It was a disaster. And your folks won't take it. You got the records, bud, you know, because there were arguments about this person, and this person was really, really wanted all this money, overtime money. It was overtime in that case, and then there was, excuse me, finger in my shell, forgot to say that. But anyway, the thing is, you're right, I mean, and, but how many employees you got that are constitutional officers?
I mean, it's a handful, as the county said.
And the question is, how do you want, you know, I think you're right, that, you know, you've got to mull us over and think about what you want to do, because when you go from salary to hourly, you know, then, then, how do you treat overtime? How do you treat cop time? And I'm getting way in the woods here. If I had a department cop, I think I probably would, but I know it's out there in bite you, right?
Well, we have some policies, but we don't really have a way of record keeping. We haven't been doing it.
This is the thing, I think, and you guys are full-time supervisors, I realize that, you know, but it's going to be something that's going to have to roll up the sleeves and decide what you want to do. I mean, you know, unless, you know, you give it to somebody to study and then get back to you and then make some recommendations and do it that way, you know, somebody who knows, you know, well, at least knows enough people to allow not to step on the line for you, if you will, you know, to recommend something.
That's the idea borrowing from the Doyden County. They probably haven't been there.
Yeah, well, especially if they had some, I mean, you know, bigger county like Warren County or something, they may get too complex on you, you know? I don't know.
That was my concern, that Doyden County's all much larger, probably have a human resource officer that handles much of that. I think we'd have to look at the smaller counties and how they do it.
Madison might be a good one to start, right?
Three Madison.
Yeah, that'd be a good size.
Still Madison is, I think, three times population wise. I think they're 21,000.
I think you have 12. That's in twice.
Wouldn't hurt to ask, you know, local, I don't know how administrators are or whether that cooperating, but could you, for example, call the administrator in Page County and ask him to send you the American employment, if they have, you know, pure county employees under the administrator, under the board of supervisors, which, you know, how the structure is, send me a copy of what you got, you know? And then, you know, look through that, page through it, decide, you know, what's good and what's bad.
I would say it'd probably take a day, workshop, to go through different policies and look at leads and workers comp, how they integrate business hours, time requirements, so I would say it'd probably take a good full day session to do that.
Well, the other piece of that is performance evaluation, to how they conduct that, how they do that.
You have to have a job description before you can do that. It's kind of hard to say you have to do a job if you don't have a job description.
And then, do you want the employee to do a self-evaluation and you get that first, or do you want that?
Well, they can't do a self-evaluation until we have a job description.
And how does that play into, say, the constitutional officers' offices and their employees?
That's...
They're on their own.
She's out there doing that.
Well, they, they, I'm not sure how the comp board, are those suggested guidelines the comp board gives you now or is it mandatory?
They put on that, that class, and it's pretty much, they're not saying that it's mandated, but if you want to kick yourself out of trouble, you better do it.
That's, that's true, and that was what I was asking, because that's the same stuff you used to tell me a long ago, when the dinosaurs roamed the earth and I was still working, but...
So, time sheets, evaluations, job descriptions, performance reviews.
Yeah, and especially if you want, you know, I suit yourself. Well, you know, that's, that's what I'm saying, is when you get into that area, I guess you need to know where you want to go and how far you want to go.
Well, we've got to do it.
No, I agree with you, because I mean, if you, if you can argue with somebody, they present you with a big bill for compensation or something, how do you argue with what you got?
That's where we're at right now.
Well, don't feel like a lone ranger, because the same thing happened with Page County. They started to try and do something better there.
The trouble is, it happened here before years ago, and apparently we didn't put other things in place when it happened there.
Well, I think you're, you're in depth right away. I mean, you're looking at it now, and this is a good start to decide.
Well, it's Deputy Administrator's also from a relatively small rural county, although it's kind of same size as Madison, maybe, may have some ideas as well.
Okay, what do we think? I guess we're going to recess until 7:00 PM?
Well, thank you, officer. I've been too rough on me.